I call this regular meeting of the Minnetonka City Council to order Monday, July 24th, at 5:30 PM. Please, for to limit distractions, please limit your, or silence your cellphones or put them on vibrate. Moving on to item number one on the agenda, and that's roll call.
Burlingame?
Here.
Evans?
Here.
Janser?
Olson?
Here.
Pittner?
Here.
Padra Gula?
Here.
Ross?
Here.
Moving on to item number two on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
I proclaim allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to item number three, the Mayor's Report. I think, first of all, on behalf of the City Council, I want to extend our deep sadness for the loss of one of our team here, City Minnet recently, and that's Tammy Peterson Ness. She took her first EMT class in 1986. She is, or she was, our Assistant PSAT Manager. Visitation was tonight until 6:00 PM, just right across the street at Thomas Family Funeral Home. We send our thoughts and prayers to her two children and three grandchildren. And then, her funeral will be tomorrow, at the gymnasium in Mohaw. So, family and friends, Tammy cut a wide swath. She had many friends, and she was well-loved in the community. She will be dearly missed by us here at the City of Minnet. So, our thoughts and prayers go out to Tammy, her family, and friends. Moving on to, more on the Mayor's Report, some of the activities that I took part in over the last couple weeks. We had, and I saw many of the City Council members here at the Employee Appreciation Lunch. I was also invited to take part in the Walk Minnet event. That was on a walking path, a newer walking path, west of Minnet. We spent a day on the Minnet Air Force Base touring with area legislators and congressional staff. Kicked off the home for the holidays, and I'll get more into that in a little bit. Fundraising event. And then, we had a meeting with the team from Visit Minnet. And then, of course, we all know the State Fair's in town. I've been taking part in the Judging the Food Frenzy, State Fair Parade, opened the grandstand with Ludacris on Friday night. And today, we had a welcome home to some deployed troops from the Minnet Air Force Base. Met with the team from the Host Fest for planning some of their events coming up this fall. Took on several calls about recycling, and met with Renee Korslien and her team several times in preparation for the State Fair. But, getting back to Home for the Holidays, it's an event that some local businesses have gotten together with myself. Minnet Air Force Base is home to the largest percentage, the largest population of first-year airmen in the Air Force. So, these kids, they graduate from high school, they go to basic training, and their first stop is Minnet, North Dakota. And Minnet has more than any other base in the Air Force. And, it's become evident to me, and it was kind of, it's kind of a project I've taken under my wing, along with a couple of businesses, to raise some funds to send as many of those airmen home for the holidays as we possibly can. So, with the help of Magic City Beverage, Anheuser-Busch, and Dakota Harley-Davidson, we were able to get a Harley-Davidson purchased and donated to this cause. And we are selling raffle tickets, they'll be out and about. And I really would encourage residents who want to win this Harley, to purchase a raffle ticket. And every single penny, and this is what I really like, every single penny raised will go to send an airman home for the holidays. So, that was, that was kicked off there. So, are there any questions on my report? Carrie?
How do you get those raffle tickets?
I've got some in my office. In fact, $50 apiece. And then, they will also be, basically, most of the customers that Magic City Beverage has. So, I guess the easy way, basically, wherever Budweiser is sold, you can find, you'd be able to get raffle tickets. They also have them out there at the booth, if you're going to attend the North Dakota State Fair. They have the Clydesdales out there, and they have the Harley out there on display. And, tickets will be available out there. We will be drawing the winning ticket here on, in front of City Hall, on September 15th. And then, we will be presenting it at the Host Fest on Military Day, which I believe, it's like the 29th or something of September. I think it's the last Saturday of the Host Fest, we'll be onstage, presenting the Harley to the winners, along with a check to the commanders of the Minnet Air Force Base. So, thank you for that clarification. Any other questions? If not-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
Hey, I had a little technical difficulty, but I did manage to get connected, so I wanted to let you know.
Thank you, Mark. Oh, and then, moving on to item 3.1. The Mayor proclaims July as Disability Pride Month. Whereas Disability Pride Month is celebrated nationally in the month of July to honor the enactment of the Americans with Disabilities Act of 1990, and whereas the disability is a diverse identity in and of itself encompassing those with physical, intellectual, developmental, emotional, invisible, acquired, chronic, and more, and whereas disability does not diminish one's right to independence, self-determination, or engagement with society, but should be celebrated aspect of one's personhood. And, it is important to take time this month to reflect on the disability rights movement and the progress that has been made, and to recognize that disabled individuals contribute to our community's success and strength in immeasurable ways. And whereas, we must recognize the value and intersectionality of the disability experience in our lives, acknowledge and address the barriers presented to individuals with disabilities in our society, and appreciate that diversity makes our city stronger. And whereas, this month, the City of Minnet celebrates the countless talents, experiences, and contributions of individuals with disabilities, and reaffirms its commitment to take meaningful action to build a city that is inclusive to all. Now, therefore do I, Tom Ross, Mayor of Minnet, North Dakota, hereby proclaim July as Disability Pride Month in the City of Minnet. And I encourage all people in our community to celebrate the achievements, accomplishments, and contributions by individuals with disabilities who call our community home. Signed by Tom Ross, Mayor of the City Minnet, and Michaela McWilliams, City Minnet Clerk.
I just wanted to take a second to thank you for that. As some people know, I suffer from multiple sclerosis, what is oftentimes an invisible disability. Hasn't been so invisible this past week, I've been suffering from a flare-up. But, you know, we, all of us who suffer both visible and invisible disabilities, appreciate this. I also want to do a special recognition of our city engineer Lance Meyer, who, in the building of the City Hall, was always very welcoming and open to suggestions from people experiencing disabilities on making this building or parking lot, and all of our city engineering projects more accessible for people who are experiencing disabilities, as well as most of our city staff. Most of our department heads are always very open to hearing how they can approve their department for people experiencing disabilities. So, just wanted to say that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Scott?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to recognize too, all of the people with disabilities, the advocates that came tonight to read this proclamation. Most of you, many of you, this may be your first City Council meeting ever, many of you have not been to this new building yet. You're always welcome. It's good to see you here. You'll see, we're not, we don't bite usually, and it's really nice to see your engagement within the community. So, thank you so much for being here.
And I echo those comments as well. Thank you, Scott. Moving on to item number four, and that is the City Manager's Report. Harold?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as always, there is the City Manager's Report prepared and provided to you in your packet, also available to the public through the city website. Be happy to answer any questions that any of the council may have, if any come from that report.
Any questions for Harold?
If not, I'd like to provide some time to Chief Klug to talk about some of the potential traffic impacts with regard to Tammy Peterson's funeral tomorrow.
Thank you, Harold. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to let you know, tomorrow, we will leave the area of Thomas Family Funeral Home with Tammy Peterson en route to Mohaw. There'll be a large number of emergency service vehicles. They're going to stage in the lot, Trinity's lot, west of the parking garage. But there'll also be a large number of motorcycles, because she was a member of a large motorcycle community as well. So, we're not planning on closing any roads, but I just wanted to make sure that the public and City Hall employees were aware that motorcycles will be staging on First Street, just on the other side of the parking garage, and then overflow on the Third Avenue. So, there might be a little bit of congestion, just watch out for motorcycles. And then, we'll leave, go out on Second Avenue north on Broadway. So, should be out of everybody's way as soon as we get moving, but just want to make sure you're aware.
Thank you, Joe.
I have an unrelated question. I know you have been in contact and supportive to our Fargo brothers and sisters who lost Officer Wallen. Is Minnet PD going to have a presence at the service this week?
Yep. Mayor and Elder Woman Evans, we had an officer attend the funeral on Saturday. And we also have, we're planning on taking four patrol cars and as many officers that want to go. We're just trying to wrap up the final details on that.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five, and that is Consider the Report of the Planning Commission. Moving on to item 5.1, Public Hearing. Public Hearing, Zoning Map Amendment for South Main Street. So, this is an opportunity for anybody to, who wishes to speak either for or against the zoning map amendment for South Main Street. I think right now, though, I think we'll probably start it off with a little background from John Van Dyke.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, let's get set up here. Make sure that what you're seeing is what I'm seeing. We did rehearse this, and it worked during rehearsals, so. Just unplug it and plug it back in. Okay. Spoken like a true IT professional. There we go. All right. I'll try to be quick. Yeah, so this is the zoning map amendment for 415 South Main, for everybody in the audience who's curious about it. So, here's the subject property. You can see Trinity Hospital to the west. There's some budding residential neighborhood to the east and the south. As far as the zones that are currently present in the area, all the dark red is your Central Business District. The subject property is presently C1 Neighborhood Commercial, as is the property to the south. Everything in orange is what's R3B, that's a medium-density residential zone. And the proposal is to switch this from C1 Neighborhood Commercial to CBD Central Business District. So, I'm also going to show you a bit of a pullback. I know one of the issues is like, well, how much is CBD encroaching into the neighboring residential? And so, I just wanted to show a broader view of some of the other blocks to the east that are certainly encroaching further into, further south, rather. And here's our future land use map. So, we just got done updating our comprehensive plan. And part of that comprehensive plan is the future land use map. So, that's all the future uses. That's how we want to see the area transition, or the city transition over time. And so, a lot of attention and focus was put on the downtown core, as you can imagine, as well as identifying the fringe districts or fringe areas of downtown. And that's, that's how we've set up the future land use map. We've got the downtown core, which is what's downtown mixed use. And then, you have the fringe areas. One of, this is one of the fringe areas where Trinity, everything south of Burdick was pretty much a fringe area, west of Broadway. And then, a lot of places northeast of the tracks is also fringe area. So, doing the same thing with the future land use, it's clear approximately about a block south of Burdick was planned to be some redevelopment into this fringe, redevelop as fringe. And so, what does that mean? Effectively, we've got this matrix here that ties our zoning and our future land use map. So, this is a guide to kind of help Planning Commission staff, Planning Commission, City Council, just know what is an appropriate zone change request look like. And so, we use the future land use as a guide to say this is appropriate or not appropriate. And so, if we look at purple, that's the DF, purple, downtown fringe, just look over to the right. And anything that's filled in black would be the appropriate zoning districts that could potentially fit within that area. And so, we've got RH, that's our high-density residential zone. We've got C2, general commercial. And then, we've got CBD Central Business District. So, what is the fringe? And so, in our comp plan, we kind of explain what are all these different designations mean. And if you look in the bottom left, development characteristics, you can see that it's less intense, less intense than the downtown mixed-use area, but still maintains that emphasis on walkable development. One of the focuses, the adaptive reuse of vacant, underutilized buildings, which all Trinity properties are right now. Buildings oriented towards the street, which this one is. And so, previously, from 2022 forward, we have rezoned several properties. This is that area that's kind of in the hotspot for a lot of these rezones to CBD. And granted, this has more of a historical or industrial historical use that we're attempting as a city to move away from, and more into that expanded Central Business District zone. And so, there's been a myriad of different ones, I think six or seven over the last 18 months or so. And so, as staff and the Planning Commission and City Councils, we're evaluating zoning map amendment requests. We use the future land use, of course, as a guide to see is this appropriate zone that fits within this matrix, but also, we're evaluating it based on these four criteria. And so, the requested, I'll just read them out, so it's clear. The requested zone change is justified by a change in conditions that occurred since the previous zoning classification was established, an error in the official zoning map, or by the need to resolve a discrepancy between the official zoning map and the comp plan. And that's what's going on here, is this last one. We've updated the comp plan, and now the applicant is requesting to bring their property in alignment with the comp plan, fulfill that by this Central Business District request. The city and other agencies will be able to provide necessary public services and facilities to serve planned or potential development allowed by the new zoning classification. That's been evaluated. All the departments have chimed in, had a chance to chime in, including schools, First District Health, et cetera. And there's no concerns with being able to provide services. Approval of the zoning change will not substantially diminish the condition or value of property in the vicinity. Staff found that there was, that the zone change would not substantially diminish the condition of value of property in the vicinity. A lot of the basis for that is just literally immediately to the west, there's a multi-story hospital with a helipad and emergency facilities that operated there successfully for decades without any issue. The proposed zoning change is consistent with the purpose of this ordinance, with the comp plan, and the other adopted policies of the city. So, what they're proposing is a permitted use, both the clinic and hospital. So, there is no issues there. So, here's some relevant definitions that we use to kind of guide applicants with regard to what their particular use is. So, a clinic would be, the difference between a clinic and a hospital is largely going to be, is it overnight stays in patient services, or not overnight stays, or outpatient services. So, a clinic would be your outpatient. You're going there for an appointment, and you're leaving same day. Hospital would be potentially providing inpatient services, where you're going to be staying overnight. And a group home, community-based residential home, I want to emphasize that residential home, licensed by the appropriate North Dakota State Licensing Authority that provides room board personal care habitation services or supervision in a family environment. And so, I provided the potential four different districts that apply. So, C1 would be no change occurs, C1. A clinic would still be permitted by right, no changes needed. A group home would be permitted for up to 12 individuals. Hospital would not be permitted. That's that inpatient overnight stays. C2, all would be permitted. CBD would all be permitted. RH, the high-density residential, clinic would not be permitted. A group home would be conditional, and a hospital would not be permitted. So, we're required to come up the findings of fact, and Planning Commission adopted these findings of fact, as well as the ultimate recommendation for approval. I know there was some issue with there not being any conditions. Conditions are just rarely applied to a zoning map amendment alone. Usually, you see conditions tied to, say, a planned unit development or a public zone request, where there's some specific site plan and proposed use that's tied to that, that district. In this case, this is just a straight rezone. We don't have any reason to provide conditions. We've got 310 pages of zoning code that are going to provide plenty of do's and don'ts to add conditions to a straight rezone. We didn't do it in the other six or seven rezone requests to CBD. And, so, I highly recommend we don't try to add conditions when it's not warranted. Do want to point out that there are other clinic uses. So, Ascend Wellness, which is a well-respected business in downtown, does provide certain treatment in a clinic setting related to addiction and substance abuse, as well as many other things. But, one of the offerings is that ketamine infusion. And so, that's a controlled substance that's provided to certain people with certain needs, as a therapeutic approach to their treatment. They've been able to operate successfully without any issue, as far as I'm aware, right on Main Street, without any issues. And the zoning code would permit them without any issue. There's been no problems whatsoever. So, just wanted to give a basic background. There's been a lot of talk about, why are we doing this, and what's going on, or should we table the items so that we can change the code? And I just want to say that, highly recommend you do not attempt to move the goalpost in the middle of the game. They submit an application, they're vested at the time of application. Those codes and everything in the codes are written and adopted. And obviously, codes can always be updated and refined. We do that quite frequently, as much as we possibly can. But I just caution you to do it in the middle of an application is not a good, good idea. So, I don't know if you have any other questions, or you want me just to take a seat?
Any questions of Jonathan? Thank you, Jonathan. We'll probably have you stand by. Just for some legal background, I'm going to call on City Attorney Stephanie.
Mayor, members of the council, it's my understanding that several of you have been contacted regarding the applicant's proposed use as of current for the property, which in our agenda is set forth as being an inpatient treatment center. So, the Americans with Disabilities Act, the ADA, ensures that people with disabilities have the same rights and opportunities as everybody else. And that also includes people that are in recovery from addictions to alcohol and drugs. So, it would be my recommendation that if the council is going to approve or deny it, it not be rooted in the proposed use of the property, but that it be rooted in the four criteria that Planner Van Dyke set forth, and that's set forth in the land development ordinance. So, if anyone has any questions on that, I can stand by for questions.
Any questions of Stephanie? Okay, if not, I will open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for those who are wishing to either speak for or against the zoning map amendment. Now is your time to speak.
Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm Peter Hugrit. I live up Main Street and around the corner from the proposed facility. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak on this matter. First of all, I'd like to strongly point out that my neighbors and myself are not opposed to giving help- to giving help and support to people that need it. However, we feel this proposed facility has not been thoroughly researched or thought through. The zoning code contains only one medical use category besides nursing home, and that is hospital. The planning commission defines these treatment facilities as hospitals, and we feel that this is overly broad. Where did this definition come from, and should it or shouldn't it be revised? Changing the subject slightly, but it still counts, thousands of dollars were spent several years ago rebuilding the downtown area with utilities, streets, curb gutter, just a general fix-up, and it was much needed. It was a huge improvement to the appearance and the usefulness of the area. So fast forward to today, we have the facade program. I happen to be on the Renaissance Committee. I've been on it since it started in 2000, 2001. And this program has really taken off. There's been quite a few downtown property owners that have taken advantage of this. I'll just name a few, the Mouse River Players, Iron Horse Restaurant, Whiskey Nine Restaurant, which is almost completed, The Century Eyewear Building, Margie's Art Glass, and almost completed is the 701 Building. It's a former Osslander Building. And presently, we have two more approved projects under construction, notably the former Esotericas Ladies Ready-to-Wear and Anderson's DNS Bootery. There are also several more locations that may come for approval as they get their bids and do the required paperwork. My point in talking about this is the application for zoning change for the Trinity Guest House to be used as a treatment facility was approved by the planning commission without conditions, which to me, my way of thinking, it means that more of these type facilities could be located throughout the CBD without regard as to what type of treatment facilities could be opened. For example, a methadone clinic for treatment for drug addicts, treatment for sex offenders, treatment for domestic violence offenders. In my opinion, this goes, if this goes forward, it will deter private investment and customers in the downtown area. I think people will tend to avoid the area. And I urge the council to refer this back to the planning department for more study and maybe to look for a more suitable location, but not on the fringe of downtown. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak either for or against the proposed zoning
Hello, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Jonathan Lane. I am the one who put in the application for the zoning change. What an awesome day to come in and have the Disabilities Act come into play. Wow. That's exactly what we do here, is we deal with individuals who suffer from this disease. And it is a horrible disease, and it affects everybody. There'll be a time when some of these people need us, and we'll be here for them. This is triage, is what we're doing here. Multiple fentanyl deaths, we're dealing with women and children, and pregnant women in this facility. And I don't know, I don't know anything that's more serious than this right here. We are honored to be a part of this and even be considered for something like this. We are in full compliance with the state of North Dakota. Our facility in Watford City is by far the nicest place that's out there. It is well taken care of. It will not be an eyesore downtown. It will be, it will be amazing. And the things that are coming out of it will be even more amazing. I don't know how much more to express our concern for these people, that we need this, and we are more than willing to provide the service and more than willing to give what we have away. I appreciate you guys' time, and if there's any questions or anything afterwards, I'm here to answer. Thank you so much.
Still continuing on, if there's anybody who wishes to address the council either for or against.
Good evening all, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Thank you so much for having us. I guess my thing is I live right across, we live, my wife and I live right across the alley from this opposed, I hate to say opposed, but from this proposed building that they're changing the zone. I'll be honest with you all, it's a great idea, good idea, super idea. I just don't, we don't like it in our backyard. We've got a granddaughter. We have neighbors to the south that have probably, I would say, four grandchildren. Neighbors to the north that have three grandchildren, another neighbor to the north that has probably four great-grandchildren. Neighbors to the east that have grandchildren. And I guess my thing is, in the whole entire city of mine, which is so large and so huge, why does it have to be placed right across the alley or the street from private citizens? Is there no other place that it can be rezoned or put that we're not dealing with private citizens? I guess that's my biggest concern. What he has going on here, and I'm with a lot of you here, what he has going on here is a great idea. I'm for that. I'm just not for it in my backyard because of what I believe is going to be the circumstances. And this has been addressed before. We don't know if, I mean, if it's a pregnant women's shelter or whatever, it takes two to tango, and we cannot be guaranteed that estranged husband, boyfriend, lover, whatever the case may be, is not going to come in contact and have issues in my backyard. And I know he talked about, he's got security cameras and lockdown and everything else. And in this day and age, I hate to say it, security cameras, lockdown is not going to stop a bullet from coming through my door. And I can, I hope and pray to God that it doesn't come to that. But I don't want to push it so it can come to that. I would wholeheartedly appreciate if you could find it in your best interest and in your will to not approve this, so it can be moved someplace where it is not so close to a residential area. Thank you.
Just for the record, though, can we have you state your name?
Keith Cochran.
Thank you, Keith. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
I'm Paris Cogstead, and we live just across the street from Cochran's. We live on First Street, Main Street. We're almost a block, just a block away. Now, I emailed letters to all of you. I only got a response from Ms. Olson. I'm going to read this letter again and probably add in some other comments I have. Several in our neighborhood attended the meeting held last Tuesday, July 11th, at City Hall concerning the Trinity property formerly Guest House that was at 415 Main Street. We live at 421 First Street Southeast, one block away to the east. As well as several of our neighbors have concern about housing pregnant women and children there. There's not, not that there isn't a need in our community, it's definitely a need. I've had relatives that have been pregnant and needed help with addiction. I get that, but not necessarily there. Would you want it in your backyard? There are other Trinity properties that are available. Has anybody thought about Trinity Riverside? There is two big buildings there. I've personally been in those buildings. They could probably be used to facilitate that. And there's a house there that if they've got security or whatever, they could stay How safe would it be for the children of these women? Are they going to fence up the yard? They're on Main Street, that's busy enough, but they're a block away from Burdick Expressway. We are a block away from Burdick Expressway, and we almost had a daughter hit by a car on that crosswalk that's lit. So I have concerns about that as well. Not to mention, where are they going to have parking? He had said something about the parking lot being made into a gymnasium or something for the children to be. Well, if they do that, where are they going to park? These people may or may not have vehicles. Are they going to have street parking? Are they going to park in the old Trinity park? You know, we don't know anything about that. We've got enough traffic up and down First Street as it is, and Fifth Avenue, and it's gone down a little bit since Trinity Hospital has moved. However, the, some of the things that have gone on to the southwest of us, up, if you're ever on the corner of First Street, Ramstead Avenue, and Fifth Avenue, there's a stairwell that goes up. That is a nest of crap up there. We hear arguing, we hear swearing, we hear fighting, and there's constantly, up and down, up and down, people with backpacks, primarily guys with backpacks, hoodies, whatever. What are they doing up there? What, I mean, not that, you know, somebody doesn't, I've used a backpack myself, but it's very curious what's going on up there. And I've heard, we've seen police officers go up there. Then they're talking about the former Victorian, it was a, what, a bed and breakfast, and now that's going to be a men's facility or somewhat similar to that? Where does that end? If you got this, and you've got this, and then where, we've lived in our house for 29 years, and that neighborhood has changed with the stuff going on up the hill from us. And what's to say that, like Keith said, takes two to tango? You've got either a, an ex-spouse, ex-boyfriend, family members that don't want her there or whatever. How do we know if they're not packing a gun? How do we know that they don't have some other kind of weapon? And all of us in that neighborhood have grandchildren. It's very concerning to us. And security cameras are great. They will tell you maybe who did it, if you can identify the person. They might tell you the license number, but that's after the fact. That's after somebody's been hurt or snatched or whatever. Just saying. And the security guards, they are not police officers. Am I correct? They cannot arrest anybody, correct? I don't know. So they would have to call Minutet PD. We've had response from Minutet PD take 15, 20 minutes. I get it that maybe what we have isn't like, you know, somebody bleeding or whatever, but by the time they get there, whatever's happening is gone, done. The perpetrators are gone. So we have concerns about this genuinely. And again, I say, would you want it in your backyard? Would you want it next to you and your grandchildren or children? I just, I'm thinking Riverside would be a much better place. There's a lot of grass area for the kids to play. They could fence that. I don't know. I just think there's probably a better resolution than right where it is.
Hi, my name is Linda Fugman, and I live right directly behind this house. And I just want to say that what the other two have said, I'm 100% behind them. I have grandkids to come to my house, and I feel safe there now, but with this going on and all, I'm not sure I feel safe or that I'm going to want my grandkids to come over and visit me.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Mr. Mayor and City Council members, my name is Judith Howard Hugrit. And what I want to make clear right from the beginning is that none of us in the neighborhood object to providing treatment for people who need treatment. They need it, they should have it. What we are objecting to, however, is locating this treatment facility in a residential area near the heart of downtown Minutet. And the neighborhood, as I said, want these people to get treatment, but not right next door to a family residence. Now, my husband and I were both business owners in Minutet before we retired. And as business owners, we know that people vote with their feet and their money. And as former business owners, we're very concerned about downtown. That is very close to downtown. In fact, if the zoning change goes through, it will be a CBD, which is what, central business district, which is what downtown is. And if people don't feel safe coming downtown to shop or to eat, then downtown is going to suffer. Now, the going concerns on Main Street are taxpayers, aren't they? And so those taxpayers' dollars are important to the city's budget. And I was very interested to read last week that the city is facing a $4 million deficit next year. Where's the money going to come from if businesses downtown close? So we really are hopeful that you understand where we're coming from. It's not that we're opposed to these treatment facilities, it's just, are there better places? Now, I don't know, Mayor Ross, if you were with the group that went to Norway? And I think from what I recall is that the small, one of the towns that you visited, we're very proud of the treatment facility that they were going to put up for people who had alcohol and drug problems. And when they showed it to you, where was it? It wasn't in downtown. It was outside the city, and it was green space. You know, these people that have problems, and I'm like one of the other people who got up, we've had this in our family, so I know. This is an illness. People need help. We're not against it. But what they need is peace and quiet, green, nature, not downtown, okay? So what I would like to see the council do is defer a decision until there are answers to some questions. And by the way, I did send a letter to the city manager, and I asked a number of questions, and I'm hopeful that the city manager made sure that all of you saw that letter. So here are some of the questions. Is this residential area an appropriate location? Is changing the zone to a central business district the way to go? Is that going to open up downtown to having these facilities right next door to some of our present facilities? And how would customers react to that? Where are the social services and substance abuse facilities mentioned in the 2023 comprehensive plan? That's a question that I had. And these are only some of the concerns that we've got. One of the things that really kind of shocked me was after the hearing on July 11th, and by the way, I wasn't there, I wasn't able to be, we weren't, we were out of town, but we did watch it on YouTube. The very next day, it was announced that there would be a homeless shelter for men right next door to what is being proposed if the zone change goes through. So when I hear some of the discussion going on, it almost sounds like there's no choice. We have no choice. And maybe I'm hearing it wrong, but when the city planner was up here, it sounded like we have no choice. This is people with problems, so we have to do this. Well, yes, we have to give them help, but do we have to change the zone and have it right there? What I would like to do is to respectfully request that the council defer voting on this matter until the effects of the zone change that has been requested is carefully thought through. I'd like to thank you for the time that you've given me, and I appreciate being able to express these concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Rod Walker, and I live about four houses north of the proposed location of this treatment facility. Just a little background on myself, I, I echo everything that has been said by each one of these people who have the concerns about how this can potentially negatively impact where they live. I, at a time in my life, had a problem with alcohol. I have 41 years of sobriety now. I went to Minutet State. I got a degree in alcohol, alcohol and drug addiction studies. I've worked in multiple treatment settings, none of which were located anywhere close to residences, where people, their home is their castle. These treatment facilities were not close to where people lived. And again, I hope Mr., I hope Jonathan hears that all of these people here tonight are in support of what he wants to do. The need is great. It's huge. I've been there. I've lived it. I would hope that Mr. Lane has heard what these good people have had to say. He'll take a minute or two, or an hour or two to think about their testimony, what they have shared, and he will step back from this and slow the process down. I think he'd have been much more successful if on the front side, he'd have had some neighborhood meetings and found out what does, what do the neighbors think of this? He might have found support instead of pushback. So I think he plays a big role in this too, and hopefully resolving this. And if this isn't the right location, we support what he wants to do in another location. And the only other comments I have tonight are directed directly to you, Mr. Mayor. You probably recognize this paper. Ross elected Minutet Mayor. And if you don't mind, I'm just going to read a few sentences from this. Minutet Daily, Wednesday, June 15th, 2022, Ross elected Minutet Mayor. Tom Ross hopes to get to work on bringing the Minutet community, community together. And I quote, "The two words from here are together and we. I want to bring those words back, and I want to use them frequently." Now, Mr. Mayor, you and I have met in your office two or three times, and we have always brought up those two words. Either I brought those words up, or you did. There's no better time than right now to apply these two words so that we, together, can resolve this issue. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
I'm Jonathan Lane, Mr. Mayor, Council. I want to say one more thing. Part of the problem that we run into McKenzie County with where the location for this treatment center is, is these guys do require some extra care. They do have some appointments and things like that are, that are happening. With, with being downtown and access to a taxi, or an Uber, or even jumping on the bus when these guys get their jobs, and they get things going back in their life, to go able to see CPS and to see their kids, and to get these things back in action is an amazing spot. That location is, is full of resources. We are literally right next to Dakota, Right to Life, the Dakota Clinic that's over there. These girls can go in there and they can take classes, parenting classes, and they can start getting diapers and formulas and, and those swimsuits and all kinds of stuff for them. The resources are amazing and abundant down there. And some of the traffic stuff these guys are talking about, and we did buy the lot next door, trying to buy the lot next door. That was not for parking. The parking is in the front. We have the, all the lots allocated. We will be redoing that parking lot. We'll be getting it set up. The traffic that we see, there are going to be the doctor, the nurses, CPS, social services, lawyers. I mean, that's what we've got going on. We're fully transparent. We are wide open. We don't want to, to be a burden to this community. We want to be a resource to this community. The stigma of addiction is horrible. People don't understand it unless you've been there. These people are talking about it, that they've, they've had family members, and they know how serious this is. They know how bad we need this. And in McKenzie County, we are, we are doing amazing. We have serious success rates. We have people getting their families back, getting their savings account, have a girl crying, she got her job the first time ever with health insurance. I mean, the miracles are here, and the miracles are happening, and we are more than happy to be a part of this. We are asking for your guys' help with this. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
May I have a question with Mr. Lane? Can you, you've been referencing the facility in Watford City. Have there been increased crime concerns, some of the concerns that the neighbors are bringing up? Have there been unwanted visitors? Can you address some of the things that, that people have brought up?
No, ma'am. And we are, over there is, what do you call that? R2, residential 2, or R3 are the only ones that were permitted for this. And that requires, and it's a little less stringent than here, so some of the zonings are a little bit different. So we are right in a neighborhood. We are on the outskirts of, of there. And we are, we do have neighbors across the street, and they kind of opposed it at first too. And they also have chickens out there. And now they come over and they bring us eggs, and they bring us the chickens, when they butcher the chickens. They are the most amazing people ever. When you jump on our Facebook page, you can see him right there, Ray, best neighbors ever. These are the kind of things that we're doing right here. We have not seen any people coming over there and not being there. They will not be allowed there. They will be issued no trespassing if that happens, and they will be told to leave immediately.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
I also had a question.
Yeah.
How many beds are you looking for in, in your facility?
The most we can have is 16.
16.
And that is a North Dakota state requirement in order to work with Medicaid.
That's the maximum or minimum?
Yes, sir. Correct.
So 16?
Yes, sir.
And you expect to have a full house pretty much most of the time?
I would, that's, that's kind of a loaded question. Yes and no. I would hope that we would start making some, some waves, and, but there's nothing like this in the whole state of North Dakota. It's kind of why we were approached to, to make this happen. So we're going to be a resource for North Dakota. Part of the pro, not the problem, but part of the issue with not having another one in McKenzie County is there's no NICU there. So the state requires that we have NICU and have access to it, and, and these things do happen. It is ugly. It is a brutal disease. The stigma is, is holding us back here. But 16 will be, will be the most, and I would like to be a resource and say that we're going to be full, but I'd also like to think that maybe we're making a dent, and we're starting to knock some of this stuff down.
And will it be the same 16 people who stay through the treatment process? Or will they come in and go out depending on their needs and particular situations? Or what's the turnover in a sense going to be?
So we don't, we're not, we're not just a spin cycle, like a 30-day treatment. What we try to do, what we do do is we offer outpatient. So our program is actually six to nine months long. So there'll be outpatient services provided there as well, too. And people that are in treatment are not allowed to bring their cars there. They don't bring their cars, they don't park there, they don't do anything there. They're dropped off, or they're brought there, and then that's how it goes. So we would hope that the same 16 people would be involved and still come into outpatient and still be a part of that. That's, because sometimes 30 days just isn't long enough.
So they'll be coming in, in the intoxication phase or at some point?
No, no, sir. No, sir. After, after your initial intake and, and treatments going on there, if, if you're using or drunk, you'll, you'll be asked to leave. If you show up for outpatient therapy session and something like that's going, you will not be, you will not be there. You'll be asked to leave as well.
And the issue of pregnant women, is that your prime population, or will any female be allowed in, or any male?
No males. It'll just be females.
And do they have to be pregnant?
No, sir. With, another option, or another problem, I guess, is North Dakota is there's no place for women with children. I want to go get treatment, I want to get help, but I can't, I have a place, place to take my kids. I don't have anywhere to go with my kids.
So you think natural kind of market forces will limit most of your clients to women who are pregnant or with families?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Young children?
I believe so.
But that's under requirement for admission?
It is, it is strictly a women's facility. Our primary target is going to be women with children and, and pregnant women.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council?
Hello again. Again, I, I love you. I, I love what you're doing. I have no issues with that whatsoever. All I need is location, location, location. We're living in Minutet, North Dakota, and he talked about Dakota Hope Clinic being just down the street. We're living in Minutet. You can get anywhere in seven minutes. He talked about getting a Lyft or an Uber, or we don't have taxis anymore, but you can get anywhere you need to be on a bus within seven to 10 minutes. So if your big push is that we're next to the Dakota Hope Clinic, I don't know. I think no matter where you are, you can get to where you need to be in a allotted amount of time. So again, I love everything he's doing. This is not, this is nothing personal, this is nothing against him. Again, it is just, we do not want it in our backyard. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sir.
May I ask that gentleman a question?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, sir. So you, you've been living in the neighborhood for a long time, correct?
We've been living there for a long time?
Yes.
24 years, give or take.
So the guest house that Trinity had been running for a number of years has been in your backyard, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Were there security, was there security in place when residents were staying there, guests were staying there, I guess I should say? Did you know who was there? Did you know if anyone was carrying a gun or doing any kind of illegal activity?
Sorry. The, the only security that they had was this, was the security that Trinity Hospital provided.
And did you ever have any concerns with any of the people that were staying there?
Yes. Well, not with the people that were staying there. No. But the people that were staying there had people probably in a cancer care unit or in the hospital. So I would say...
And I guess my point would be, sir, that you didn't know who was there. So you didn't know if they were safe people or unsafe people? You were unaware of who was staying there overnight or for an extended stay?
No, I did not.
Okay, thank you.
I did not. You're welcome.
Final call for any comments to the, address this.
Hi there, everybody. Can you hear me? My name is James Jamison. I didn't plan to speak, but I do live here downtown.
A bit closer to the microphone, James. Or like, that podium actually comes up and down, like, it's...
If you look in the front, there's buttons.
It's like a button, like it's...
Is that better?
That's fine.
Yeah, I'll never get this right, I'm sorry. But my name is James Jamison. I live here downtown as well, and that's why I decided that I wanted to speak. Thank you. I want to take into account, I want to think of places like Project B. I also want to take into consideration of the DVCC. The DVCC is built in a residential area. I don't know if there's crime rate or anything like that, but I do believe that wherever it goes, had it not been there, it wouldn't be able, we wouldn't be able to give those, the people, the individuals, the services that they, that they need. I have a service animal, so I walk her out three to five times a day, and you'd be surprised about the individuals that we come across, that I just need somebody to listen to them because they're going through those troubles, they're in addiction and things like that. And I keep crosses in my pockets, and we sit there, and we pray with them, and we listen to them, because they just need somebody to help them. And also, I'm disabled as well, and I was at rock bottom, and if the community didn't help me, I wouldn't be here where I was. I wasn't on drugs or rehabilitation or anything like that, but I was rehabilitating through disability, and I don't have transportation currently. I do not have transportation. And if it wasn't for being here downtown and being able to ride the buses and utilize the resources here downtown, I would not make it. And it's not just a simple seven minutes here, five minutes there. It takes hours to walk around, and if you don't catch the bus at the right time, then you have to walk to the transit or things like that, and you have to wait for the times to be able to catch the buses and things like that. If people, if it, if it's here downtown, that's going to help those people better. I understand and I respect, you know, what everybody's saying about it being in their backyard, but we already have things that are in people's backyards as well. I think if we considered and did the research on the crime rate, for example, as the DVC, I also know that there's a halfway house, forgive me, it's off First Street or First Avenue Southeast by that field. There's never much trouble or anything there. They come out, they smoke their cigarettes, they go back in. I don't think these people should be prejudged just because of a situation that they're going through, or because of a location of where it's going. Thank you very much for listening to me. And again, I apologize, I did not plan to speak, but you all have a good day.
No, if there's no further comments?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Second.
We have a motion to close the public hearing. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? Is that, does that go, is your motion along with...
No, don't we have to do both separately? Okay. And then I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance on frustrating for a zoning amendment.
I agree.
Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Lisa.
So I, I am sympathetic to the concerns that people have, because I think when someone doesn't know what the future holds, it, it can be concerning. But I can say that in nearly 14 years sitting in city council, we've seen this same situation. It's just been on a different block. We've heard about methadone clinics, we've heard about recovery houses, we've heard about tribal homes. Every time, there was a concern that the, the crime rate would increase, that the property values would decrease, and that's never occurred. And I feel confident that if this is approved, it'll be the same situation. I don't think that we have to live in fear that something bad is going to happen because this location is chosen, and I, I would agree with everyone that has spoken, that the need is great, and this location seems to be the perfect location for it to be.
There are any, Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I, I think for myself, I can agree with everyone that's spoken as well. I, I don't know if I'd want it in my backyard. I'm just being honest. I, I don't know if I would be as receptive to it. But what we're here to discuss isn't what's going into the property. We're here to discuss a zone change that allows a use. I mean, if they said, "We want to change the zone to Central Business District so we can take advantage of a facade program, and we're going to open an ice cream parlor," we wouldn't be here. That's the reality in which, where we're at. I mean, and, and we have to, I think of Trinity Hospital, which was currently right across the street from this facility. When someone was ODing, someone got into a gunfight, or a bar fight, or got beat up, that's where they went. They didn't necessarily stick around for treatment. They skedaddled out of there because they didn't want to get arrested, and they were right in the neighborhood. I mean, that's just a reality in which that facility was. I mean, that was, what was happening. I mean, that's, let's not kid ourselves. We've heard concerns from citizens with it being so close to residential neighborhood. And again, I agree. I don't know if I'd want it in my backyard. But like was said by the city planner, we cannot move the goalposts in the middle of the game. We, we can't. It's, we're, we're looking for a lawsuit at that point. And you look at some of the other recovery facilities, Brooklyn Flats residential area, Recovery House, Sanctuary, Hope's House, Case Place. I don't know if Case Place is still, that was a juveniles recovery facility. And I feel for the individuals that have spoken that have concerns for their children and their grandchildren. I do. I would have those same concerns when a rehab facility comes in, because I'm familiar with that demographic, that, the people that, that, that are challenged with this disease. But I also am sympathetic to the women that are going through this disease and their children as well, because they deserve help. They deserve a second chance. Those families deserve to be reunited and, and be given resources to lift themselves up. They are centrally located. It makes sense. Location, location, location. It does make sense in this. I agree. Butting up to residential, right next to the Central Business District, commercial. I agree that, 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 that this is a unique location, but it does provide a lot of benefit, but it comes with some concerns. Another item that was discussed by our city planner was that we do look at codes. And I don't know if the, the council has the appetite for going forward to see if this does fit into the Central Business District. Maybe this is lending itself to another discussion that maybe it fits better in a commercial setting, or residential, strictly residential setting. So I don't know if it's appropriate to direct staff to, by the end of the year, give us options on, on how to define this, maybe not as a hospital, but as a recovery facility going forward. But again, we can't change the goalpost at this point in the game. It's, it's not appropriate. I, I can't support that. And again, I'll, I'll, I'll vote to, to support this, and, and again, I think it fills a need that's desperately needed in the community.
Thank you, Paul. Any other comments? Carrie?
I will be supporting this for many of the reasons that Paul and Lisa said. I commend Providence House. I mean, we have no inpatient services in Minutet for women and rec... I mean, we have no inpatient services in Minnetonka for women in recovery or men in recovery. So this is a huge inpatient. Steve, you're looking for impatient. There's no beds for women and their children in this city. So this is important. I am in complete alignment with Mayor Ross when he says "together" and "we." But to me, the "together" and "we" means also the women experiencing this addiction and their children. And that's the "together" and "we" in the Minnetonka I want to support.
Scott?
I just want to tell a little personal story, not in my backyard. And what's happened in my personal backyard before was a few years ago, I know the one person talked about how there was a house or area where there was people going up and down the stairs with backpacks and perhaps some sketchy activity happening. That has happened in my backyard. In my backyard, ten, over 10 years ago, there was some sketchy activity happening. And I had one neighbor move in and put in some security cameras, and another neighbor move in who happened to be a deputy sheriff. And having a patrol car come there a few times a day quickly moved those people out of my neighborhood. I would actually ask you to maybe change your perspective on this a little bit and realize that having security guards there, having cameras in the area, is going to be less inviting for sketchy behavior. That's going to actually, you know, help with that because the last thing that Providence House wants is sketchy people in that neighborhood. And so we'll have the ability to record some of that. You'll have the ability to work with the police department. I'm sure that Chief Klug would love to have some support from that type of activity. So the best thing that can oftentimes help to prevent unwanted behavior in your community is to have a little bit more security. So with that, I'll say that I agree with a lot that was said. I appreciate Paul mentioning the fact that there are multiple sober living facilities within our community currently listed in residential areas. It happens right now. Most of us, unless we're looking for it, do not know where those are because they are just blended into our community. Because in order to create a safe environment for recovery, you actually want it to be in a safe community. You want to integrate it within where you are. So I just wanted to throw that out, and thank you all for your input. I do appreciate it, and I appreciate the fact that you've all came tonight.
Thank you, Scott. Any further comments? Steve?
Just kind of a personal perspective. As a clinical psychologist, I've worked with people with addictive behavior problems and with people with chronic and serious mental illness for 40-plus years. And often residential slash inpatient facilities are really important and, you know, are life-saving. And I don't know that the people who live in them are necessarily more dangerous or more undesirable than other people, people who might live in a boarding house or whatever. You know, having worked in a residential facility for unwed mothers, I'm not quite sure what the security or safety issue would be there. Or people who are in a supervised treatment environment, it's just hard for me to understand that. My experience with these kinds of facilities has been the opposite, that they're not any risk, and the people in them are not a risk. If anything, they're more vulnerable. I think the issue of precedence also is important. We have or had, who knows what's going on there now, but we used to have a chemical dependency treatment program at the old St. Joseph's Hospital facility across the street from it. And it was in a residential neighborhood. It was across the street from several homes. And all the people didn't stay there overnight. Treatment sessions often lasted well into the evening. It is good. You know, all sorts of people were there. Many of the people actually were civilly committed and had to be there. They didn't want to be there. So there's a precedent. That facility was there. It operate, it still operates. It was in a residential neighborhood. Not aware of any major problems. As Scott has said, we have numerous facilities of various kinds, treatment facilities, halfway houses throughout the community, and most of the time, you'd be hard pressed to tell they were there. With this facility too, with this property, it's right across the street from a hospital. And for some reason, and I do echo what Paul was saying, I think city staff need to look much more carefully at definitions of clinics and hospitals and medical offices. To me, this facility could fall into several of them, several which are already permitted. A hospital isn't permitted in one of the zoning zones, but it's there. I don't know if it was there before the zone was created or what, but Trinity Emergency Room often had people who were in altered states of consciousness, people who were victims of crimes or had committed crimes who were brought there. I've been at the emergency room several occasions where sheriffs were sitting with people so they wouldn't make a run for it. So we've had people who have been, I think you could say, dangerous there across the street. We had the helicopter flying in. When I had my office downtown, I was always afraid it would crash. We had the noise. We had the disruption of that. I don't know that this is any way different, really. If it is different, I don't think it is in terms of posing a higher risk. You know, what I have, if I ran a treatment facility, would I put it there? Probably not. I think the person who said that Riverside would be a better place for is probably right. But again, that's not my choice. I don't run the facility, and as members of the council, I don't think we can dictate to private business like that. If they choose to put a facility there, I think that's their choice, and they would mitigate the risks. Frankly, I was more concerned about traffic. And if they're telling us that people aren't allowed to have cars, that is ages a lot of my concerns. So, you know, as someone in the treatment business, I don't see any meaningful risk here. Would I want 16 people bedded down next to my yard? I don't know. But again, this is a transitional neighborhood. There already have been group housing facilities there with the Trinity Guest House and, like I say, three blocks over with the Addiction Treatment Facility. So, you know, I certainly sympathize with the people who are concerned about the neighborhood, but it is a transitional neighborhood, and it's going through a transitional time. I served on the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee, which ended its work a few months ago, and that was one of the things we talked about, was setting up areas particularly south of downtown where there could be more creative use because of Trinity leaving and because of the growth of our community. While we didn't specifically mention this type of facility, I think that was certainly within the realm of what we saw as acceptable and wanted to allow. The area south of Burdick is changing, and we wanted to facilitate downtown growing into that area. So again, I have sympathy for people who are concerned about what might happen, but with my experience, I don't see that as being terribly likely. And I think, as Carrie and Scott have said, and Lisa, that there's a tremendous need for residential facilities or treatment facilities, particularly for women with young children or women who are pregnant. And I think that is a greater community good. And if we don't have it in someone's backyard, it's never going to be there, and I think we need it to be there. So I'm going to be supporting this change, but asking at the same time, asking the city staff to really clarify some of those definitions because this facility could fit in several of the categories, and some would be allowed and some wouldn't. So I think the issue of clinics and group homes and things needs to be looked at more carefully, but I am going to be supporting this.
Thank you, Steve. Chief Klug? I just have one question, if you want to come forward. As our chief law enforcement officer in the city of Minnetonka, do you have any concerns with this facility being located in this area?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I guess, listening to all the comments, I understand the concern people have. I can tell you that, in general, when we have facilities like this open up, we rarely respond to them for calls. I can, I would say, when Trinity Hospital was there with the ER, they had gotten to the point where they were talking about hiring us off duty to just be in the ER because of the level of calls. So I think the danger would probably go down if that's what people are concerned about. This facility, it sounds like they would want to be there. They're not being forced to be there. So they don't want any more problems than anybody else. So in my opinion, I think it would be like any other of the group homes, treatment facilities we deal with. Yeah, we might get called there, but it's not any different than any residence in Minnetonka.
Thank you. Any further comments from the council? If not, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, can, Mr. Van Dyke, can you come answer a question? Just simply. What is, talk about a men's homeless shelter going next door. What is that all about?
Mayor Ross, Alderwoman Evans. So our first notice of that was in the paper along with everybody else. So they have not reached out specifically to the city. We had talked to a few potential buyers of the property to do a group home, and I believe it was going to be a ministerial training ground. You know, I'd have to look at the development review team meeting notes to get the specifics, but it wasn't a 15-person group living environment that I think the paper...
Because it would still be R1? It would still be six beds or under?
I believe that property is RM medium-dense residential, so I believe they'd have to still get a conditional use permit for up to 12. So that 15 is not attainable with our zoning.
But that hasn't, it's not in, like, planning has not, it's still in process, and our community members can provide input, right? It will be, it will be noticed with the Planning Commission meeting agenda and things like that.
Yeah. If there's any zoning map amendments that are requested, conditional use permits that are requested, absolutely. Yeah. And I guess encourage whoever purchased the property to reach out to the Planning Division and/or building inspections because a lot of the improvements on that property were unpermitted in the first place. So we want to make sure that everything, that all the money that's being poured into renovating that is going to manifest itself towards the goals of what they're trying to achieve. And like I said, I typically don't chase down after reading an article in the paper, try to find these owners and get a contact information. It really is the onerous of the property owner to reach out to the city and understand the processes that are necessary to properly move forward with their goals, so.
I didn't read the article in the paper. What location are we talking about?
This would be 425 South Main.
That old Victorian house, right, with the...
Just south of the current.
Yeah, with the paintings, artwork in them.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
So I guess if anybody here has been reached out to by them and have contact information, if you could share it. I don't have that. And again, we've got enough people actually reaching out to us to answer questions, and I'm not going to chase somebody down who's... Yeah.
Thank you. So people should just pay attention to the agenda of the Planning Commission as that perhaps moves forward, if they have input to give.
Correct.
Thanks.
Moving on to item 5.2 of public hearing, zoning map amendment for First District Health. Now is the time for those who wish to speak either for or against this zoning map amendment for First District Health. Second call for any comments. If there are no comments, what are the wishes of the council?
Move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with recommendations of staff.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Scott. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
I would only comment that this is in a residential area as well.
Any further comments? If not, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans? Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to item 5.3 of public hearing, zoning map amendment portion of Skyport addition. Now is the opportunity for those who wish to speak either for or against this zoning map amendment. Second call. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval with recommendations of staff.
A motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Second by Lisa. Any further discussion from the council? If not, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to item 5.4, public hearing, zoning map amendment in preliminary plat for Prairie View Estates Fifth Edition. Now is the time, if you wish to speak either in favor of or against this zoning map amendment in preliminary plat. Second call for any comments. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval. Close the public hearing and move approval, make, approve with recommendations of staff. Sorry.
There's a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Is there any further comments from the council? If not, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Olson? Yes.
Final public hearing, 5.5, zoning map amendment in preliminary plat for Highlander Estates Fifth subdivision. Now is the opportunity, if you either are in favor of or wish to speak against this zoning map amendment in preliminary plat. Second call for any comments. If not, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the item with staff recommendations.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? Anything further? If not, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig O'Leary?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Moving on to item number six on the agenda, that is our consent items. We have 18 items on consent, and if there is any one that needs to be pulled, now is the opportunity to pull that off.
Was 6-1 taken off? Right?
Six.
Have we done 6-1 yet?
6.1?
I made, no, it was the application for the facade improvement.
That was, that was pulled, that was pulled from action and moved to consent.
Oh, okay.
That was accidentally put on there by myself as a public hearing, not knowing we didn't need it, so it became 6.18.
Thank you. Okay, I'm good now.
If there is nothing to be pulled, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on the consent agenda.
We've got a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Steve. Any further discussion? If there is no further discussion, please call the roll.
Pittner?[1598.73]
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Moving on to action items. Item number, item seven on the agenda, moving on to 7.1, City of Minnet versus Trinity eminent domain settlement. What are the wishes of the council?
I had a move approval of item...
Motion by Kerry to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Is there any further discussion? Any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Yes. Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes. Moving on to item 7.2, a change order for the Children's Library remodel. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
Second.
We've got a motion by Kerry to approve. We got a second by Paul. Is there any further discussion?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
I just wanted, the reason this wasn't on a consent agenda is I just wanted to point out, so this is increasing the spending, but due to the generosity of some members of the public, this increased cost is being paid for by donation, and so I just wanted to give a public thank you to those that are supporting the library and helping this project continue to move forward.
Thank you for that clarification. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes. Moving on to item 7.3, South Broadway and 40th Avenue Southwest intersection revisions. What are, what are the recommendations of the council? I move approval. We've got a motion by Scott. Second by Kerry. And is this, would this be an opportunity to bring Stefan up?
Yeah, I was going to say.
To discuss... Show us some pictures if you can.
First of all, before you start, I want to thank you for, we got an email before the meeting from a family member of the person who was most recently killed at that intersection, and all of us, I think, appreciate the effort you have put into trying to figure out a solution to what we all know is a dangerous intersection in a, in a quick matter and in a way that, you know, may not be the final, you know, but can help us get to a safer intersection, so we appreciate your efforts, Stefan.
Thank you. T or Brian, could we bring up the graphic that was attached to this council memo? Can we do that, Brian? T?
Radio silence, I don't know. Are they alive back there?
It's not downloaded, do you have it on your...
I do, but I don't have an HDMI jack. Sure, can you go on?
It's online, though.
Yeah, it's online.
Can they just do it off the website?
If you give them a minute, though.
Yeah, it should work as good as I did when I did it.
You're using John's computer.
Yeah, we're just going to use the laptop again.
Can use the same computer John used. Whatever they need to do to switch. They're getting it.
I have it on here if we can switch.
Yeah, I mean, try quicker, just do that. John's computer. All right, here we go. Is this what you're looking for?
That's exactly it.
Perfect.
Got to love the on-air production meeting. Mayor Ross, members of council, kind of walked through basically what I proposed, what are the kind of options that we looked at. Just for some quick background, South Broadway and 40th Avenue, it's been identified as part of the South Broadway corridor study as a critical crash location, meaning this intersection experiences higher crash rates, more frequency of crashes than a normal intersection of this style. So its staff has known about it. The original plan was to, as part of the South Broadway reconstruct, turn this into a three-quarter intersection. That's similar to what was just done at Evergreen Avenue, or similar to, I think it's like South Broadway and 33rd Avenue by Home Depot, similar to that. But what we're trying to do with this improvement is eliminate that, basically that minor street left. So that's the left, coming out of Walmart, coming out of Buffalo Wild Wings there, going north onto South Broadway. That movement is really the same with a lot of intersections, the major crash severity intersection or movement. So what we looked at, we looked at making a three-quarter intersection, I'm going to say with concrete and the median there. Initial cost estimates are $150,000, $200,000. We have, we have to program that with the state, and then as well, with the future South Broadway reconstruction project coming on, whatever money we throw at that, it would eventually be recycled and thrown away. So what we decided to do something different now is to make it basically a temporary median for that eastbound movement and to force people making a right turn. People can still go north from this approach, they can make that right turn, go south about 1,000 feet, there's a turn lane, and then they can make the U-turn to go north if they still want to. But the point and purpose of this improvement is to get rid of that minor street left turn. That's your crash severity movement. I guess I'll stand for more questions if you got any.
Scott?
Stefan, first off, thank you for doing this. I know that when we talked about this last time, you know, I asked if you can make sure we get us something, and you did, and I appreciate that. Just out of curiosity, how do these things hold up during the wintertime? Snow, are they going to need to be replaced on a regular basis, or what are your thoughts on that?
You know, we haven't done anything like this in the past. It isn't a concern. You know, we brought this up to Public Works about a month ago or so, and before I could, just want to give a quick shout out to Public Works, before I could, well, I knew this was going to be an obstacle clearing in snow. The fear is that some are going to be bladed and taken out. But working through with Kevin and his staff, I think we got a game plan on how to attack this, they'll bring in snow plows, they'll stack it in the middle, bring in snow plows to clear it out.
Okay.
But Kevin's first comment before I brought him up to anything was, you do whatever you need to do to make it safe, and we'll work around it, so.
I appreciate that, so thank you for that, everybody.
Any other comments, questions?
What timeframe, like when, if we approve this, like, is this next week, is this next month?
So this is the, the good side of this alternative. We can get this done probably in the next two or three months, depending on ordering a material. The first thing that'll happen is the striping, the no right turn, and then after that, they'll lay down the, basically the temporary curve, but it should happen this...
Before winter?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you.
Yes.
There is a motion, yes, a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any further discussion on 7.3? If not, please call the roll.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser? Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Padraig Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes. Moving on to item 7.4 on the agenda, the revised community contribution requests for the 2024 annual budget. What are the wishes of the council? Or there's not, this is just discussion, right?
It is discussion, but staff needs some direction from council because we're finishing up the preparation of the preliminary budget, which will be presented to council at the next council meeting, August 7th. So we'll need some direction from council on how you want this reflected in the budget so we can prepare those documents.
I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Kerry.
So, you've had some time with your department heads to sort of, you know, scour the budget and, you know, look for, for savings in the rest of the budget. Is it still within possibility to fund the 2024 original requests of these entities?
Currently, staff, department heads have done a lot of great work here over the last couple of weeks. We have reduced down that $4 million deficit to almost balanced, and in the process of doing that, we have left an assumption in there, leaving all funding for these entities the same as the fiscal year 2023 budget, the year that we're currently in.
That is, I'm just looking at the difference, so... That would be fourth, so I'm looking at the difference in then the revised budget. Okay, that looks good. I mean, it seems like the, the most impacted for that would be MAEDC and Source Basin Planning, and then Project B wasn't even in the 2023, is that right?
That is correct, and I'll also note that MACDC and Source Planning Council are both funded out of the Economic Development Sales Tax Funds, not out of the general fund. So any reduction in their funding would not help with the general fund delta that we're trying to balance.
Okay, so this is where my thinking is at, is I like going back to 2023 with Commission on Aging, because we're still getting within the revised. First District and Council of the Arts, but I would like to see Project B's request for $30,000. I would like to direct city staff to see if there is someplace we could find that $30,000, even though they weren't a recipient in 2023. And then for the two entities that receive sales taxes is to have their, because it is sales tax, those consistent with the original requests made. Because again, reducing that doesn't impact, right, the, the general fund and the budgeting? Is that...
Yes, that is correct, but I think right now within, we left MACDC and Source Basin also at the 2023 budget. I believe they both requested increases for 2024. That has not been built in, and we did use sales tax to balance some other things throughout the budget, to pay for things as opposed to paying for it out of general fund, so. But if it's the desire of the majority of the council for staff to find an additional $30,000 for Project B, staff would have to go back and work on that.
Any other comments, questions, thoughts?
Well, I'd like to make a, at least on the Project B part, a formal motion then for, to direct staff to go back and see if $30,000 can be found to fund Project B.
I'd second that.
A motion to see if they can find funds or direct them to find funds?
Direct them to find funds. I don't, I mean...
And second's okay with that?
Yes.
Changing the language. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Lisa?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One question, maybe I'm looking at different numbers than you are. I have $36,000 for Project B.
That was the original, so they revised, so...
Oh, in the, in the...
Yes, so the Commission on Aging would go back to 154.5, First District 318, Project B 30, and then Council of the Arts 40. Right, those are the 2023 levels, Harold?
I'll defer to Dave. I do know... Excuse me. I'm battling some cold here, but cough drops not helping.
Dave, could you answer that then? Help, help a guy out.
Go ahead, Dave.
He's choking.
Mr. Mayor, older woman Evans, I just want to be clear that it is possible to find funding for these projects, but it comes at a cost. So some of the cuts that we've already made in the preliminary budget include funding for police officers, police cars, equipment for the fire department, training for a number of different departments, the equipment. So anything is possible, but there's a cost that comes with that. That means we give up something else that's currently in the budget that we haven't already eliminated. So if we're, we're going to fund those requests, then something else has to, to give up some ground, or we have to find up, find another revenue source, which doesn't look really likely at this point.
Any further questions? Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second on...
And again, the motion's just for the first four. I mean, I think we have some discussion about the sales tax, too.
The motion is just, is, the actual motion is to find money for Project B.
Oh, right.
And, yeah, that, so that's what we're discussing. That's the motion on the floor, to directing staff to find money for Project B.
Do want to note, I was trying to note before my coughing attack, but the Commission on Aging took the request for the council more seriously, and their revised budget goes back to the 2021 level of funding as opposed to the 2023.
Any further discussion? Scott?
So, I might surprise some people here and maybe disappoint more, but I'm going to vote no on this, not that I don't fully support the mission of Project B, I donate to it myself bluntly, my friend is the executive director there. But as I've told her, there's a really, there's a lot of really hard decisions that need to be made right now, and going along with what David just said, you know, there's some, some very important parts of public safety there being compromised. I'm not saying that I wouldn't come back to this later on. If we, you know, if, if revenues change or if there's possibilities, I, I would fully be in support of it, but I, I just can't right now, as this would be new spending, and I, I just can't move forward with new spending at this time. So with all apologies to all the people that I am going to disappoint, I will be voting no on this.
Any further discussion?
Paul? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the privilege to sit in with department heads and go through some of these last budget meetings and, and really just kind of be a fly on the wall. Probably said more than I should have, and some, not enough in others, but I, I, I'm going to, I'm going to fall in line with Scott. I think there's enough hard decisions that have been made, and our department heads have done a great job of trying to cut back to the budget, and I think it's an overarching question, is when are we going to try to, when are we going to stop cutting back to fit into a budget, and when are we going to try to grow to fit our budget? When are we going to try to grow our community and grow our revenues in order to fulfill the needs and wants of our community? So again, I, I'm going to align with, with Scott on this, that as of right now, and, and that could change. We've got budget hearings, and we're all going to get a, a couple more cracks at this. So as of right now, with my direction to staff, it would be to vote no on this and fall in line with Scott.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I'm not usually the nickels and dimes person, but this is something that I, this has kind of been rolling through my head a little bit, too. Knowing that these organizations don't only come to the City of Minnet, but come to other taxing authorities in the area. So people who live in the City of Minnet not only pay property taxes to help fund these agencies, but they'll pay again because they're a resident of Ward County. So the requests are usually a little bit different, but our citizens are, are paying for, you know, to, to balance the budgets of these organizations. I think all these organizations are worthy, I think they all do great work, but at some point, you know, we have to be cognizant of the fact that our taxpayers don't want to see any increases. So going into the budget, we've, we've talked, we've discussed that a lot, that we're going to try to hold the mill levy, and if we're going to do that, then some of these difficult decisions have to be made.
Steve?
I seconded this because I think it's an important thing that we talk about, and I certainly support these organizations and Project B. I think I will unfortunately have to vote against it because of this issue of adding on new programs. If we ask of our, of our city employees and our city staff to hold the line, and have cut them back, it seems strange to allow an, an outside agency to have an increase in the budget. I would like to see personally the 2023 figures maintained, and I'm certainly willing to listen to Project B come and make their case again. But I think, again, there's so many needs, and if we add on new things, that, that really shortchanges our staff, particularly in the public safety area, and that to me has to be a priority. I also would like to see the, the final figures come in, and then we can do the horse trading, you know, one program for another. So I, I don't want to make a decision at this point imposing a certain spending priority on city staff, when like Scott or, or Paul said, we'll have several opportunities in the future to fine tune it. The final thing I'd like to say is that it all comes out of, out of here, and I'm concerned, I'm concerned that we spend a lot of time talking about which, which part of the wallet it comes from. It all comes from citizens, and I have no problem with the property tax going up by a tenth of a mil, which I think is what, you know, $30,000 would be, or less than that, actually, I think eight, eight tenths of a mil. I don't think anybody's going to notice or complain. And, and I think sometimes we get stuck on this of, of making certain parts of our, of our revenue sacrosanct and, and vowing never to raise them. I think that confines and constrains us in certain ways, I just don't feel comfortable. It all comes out of our pocket, and if it doesn't come out of one person's pocket, it'll come out of another, and I think we need to look at the broadest consensus that we can have and not get so caught up on keeping one part of it, either in expenses and revenues, unchanged regardless of what happens. What we keep hearing from our constituents, besides keeping taxes low, which I think everybody has heard that message very clearly, we also hear demands for, for better services, for greater safety, for fewer potholes and things like that. And I'd, I'd like to see us be more, I'd say realistic, be more, be listen harder to, to that side of the equation, to the side that says, look, we want better roads, we want a firefighter there more quickly, and not, not impose arbitrary constraints on us. So I think, again, I'd like to see us fine tune when we see the budget and then make those kinds of compromises rather than imposing some further constraints at this point.
Thank you, Steve. Any further comments? We have a motion and a second on the floor. If there's no other comments, please call the roll.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
No.
Olson?
No.
Pittner?
No.
Padraig Gula?
No.
Ross?
No.
Burlingame?
Burlingame?
No.
Motion fails.
A motion failed. In a further direction, I know, Steve, you had mentioned keeping it at 2020, what level?
2023.
Keep them at 2023 level. Are, is that, are you for all of them? Are you willing to make that into a motion, or is that just providing them with direction?
I think we're just providing the staff with direction. It sounds like they've already accomplished a great deal, and I hesitate to box them in. You know, my hope would be that we could maintain those figures, but if we can't, again, I think our priority has to be toward city employees and city services directly.
And that would be for the five entities?
Yeah. And again, it troubles me. I know that EDC comes from a different taxing source and service basin, but it's still money from our pockets. And I think that's too, I think they should take a hit, too. If everybody's gonna take a hit, if anybody's gonna take a hit, I think everybody should take a hit.
Okay.
I want to be clear that even though it's coming out of sales tax, we left the funding the same for what they requested in 2023. So they both requested more funding for 2024 than 2023. Staff and the budget that they've prepared to this point has left the funding same as 2023, similar to the other agencies that are coming out of the property.
I personally would prefer keeping it, everybody at the 2023 level.
Is that a motion, then?
It can be. Sure, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Motion is to keep all community contribution requests at 2023 levels.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Lisa.
And I think just for clarification for anyone listening, this is the numbers that we want to see in the preliminary budget draft. We may change those numbers. It could happen. So we don't want anyone to assume that that is what we are approving this evening. It's just guidance.
Yep.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree, this is a good, this is a good start. And I think it's a good faith gesture, not only to citizens, but also to departments, department heads who have put in a lot of work and to our staff that work tirelessly to balance the budget. I do have some heartburn about the economic development portion and Service Basin Planning Council and Chamber EDC, because I, when, when, back to my previous statement, when are we gonna stop trying to cut back the budget? And when are we gonna try to grow our revenues? And investing in economic development, I think, is a worthwhile endeavor and worth investing in. I'm fine with leaving it at 2023 levels as the motion, motion states. But, but again, I do have some, some reservation about that, and maybe that will change, maybe it won't further down the line. But when revenues are down, you want to invest in bringing in new business and growing the business and growing the pie. So we're not just trying to divvy up the same small pie that we have. So, but I'll be supportive of this motion. I think it's a good, good direction to staff, so.
Any further comments? If not, please call the roll.
Roger Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yep.
Is there any further direction to provide, provide staff? That basically, that motion kind of covers it. So let's move on to item 7.5, the Certified Community Behavioral Clinic. What are the wishes of the council? I'd like to move approval.
Second.
We have a motion by Scott, a second by Paul. Is there any further discussion?
We've got a presentation, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, we do. Okay.
Good evening, Mayor Ross, members of the council. My name's John Buttgarrett. I'm the Regional Director of North Central Human Service Center, and I can be quick with my presentation. Next slide, please. So I'm here to talk about some perspective changes that we are hoping to make to our service delivery model. Currently, we operate, the Department of Health and Human Services operates eight different human service centers throughout the state. We have one here in Minot. We serve the seven county region around Minot, which you can see on the, on the screen, considered Region 2. So the, next slide, please. During the last Legislative Assembly, we were directed to move in a direction of certified community behavioral health centers for three of our human service centers. This is a direction that we're going to be going for all human service centers, but the timing is really what we're vying for. We would like to become the first one within the state. And it's a really important designation because frankly, North Dakota is one of three, and you'll see it on the next slide, but one of three states in the country that does not have a CCBHC. We are hoping very much that we can become the first one. Both myself and our local leadership are, I think, pretty excited that being on the front edge of change can be an opportunity. And it's much easier to be a part of the design when we get to do it proactively than kind of being reactive and being told how change needs to be. So we're very excited to it. My presentation to you is really just to not, ask for feedback and to inform you of changes that we are considering. Next slide. So North Central Human Service Center, currently what we do is up on the screen. I did, I think I missed a couple of things. I was in a rush to make this. But we do residential substance use treatment. We currently contract through RSI to provide ASAM 3.1, which is residential services for three different homes. We also have clinically managed withdrawal management as well. And that is run through our crisis residential center, which is separate from the substance abuse residential centers that we have. We also operate walk-in and drop-off crisis intervention facility as well. So any citizen can walk into our facility and have an opportunity for up to 24 hours to have crisis intervention or respite from what's going on. Now, that is for adults only. We do also work with Youth Works and other agencies to do some other respite opportunities for youth. So we're excited about that walk-in and drop-off intervention. We've not done a lot of advertising up to this point, just simply because staffing has been an issue, hoping that we have that stabilized now and we can do a little more proactive advertisement of that, that program. And then from the outpatient behavioral health treatment services, we do mental health therapy, substance use therapy, medications. We are very much community-based, doing case management, skills training and integration, and offer peer support as well. Next slide. So in the last two years, we've made a lot of really important changes and admittedly some very difficult changes. We've moved ourselves away from being community, excuse me, clinic-based, and our services are now mostly community-based, which means we're out in homes, we're out in schools, we're out in parks, we're out in basically anywhere where someone lives their daily life. We want to be able to walk alongside them and give them the skills to be more functional in their daily life, which then brings us into that next piece. So services have really been kind of withdrawn, if you will, to the severe and extreme functional impairment. In the, in the past, anyone on this, in this room could come in for services, and if you needed help from your mental health or substance use, we could provide that service. In the last couple of years, you had to meet certain eligibility benchmarks, and that was very much focused on your functional impairments and not just your symptomology. Next slide. Those are, those have been very difficult changes. We've had to turn a lot of people away as a result of those changes. If we were to become the first CCBHC, I'm extremely proud to announce that we would serve anybody that comes into the facility again. That's a major transition back to who we used to be. And I think the beautiful thing of this is it's kind of merging who we used to be with who we've really worked hard to become in the last two years. And I would say getting the best of kind of both worlds. So what is a CCBHC? It's an integrated model, offering a full array of mental health, substance use, and primary care screening services. And none of this can be possible without community relationships and collaboration. We have a really good network of providers within town, within this full region. We want to be able to partner with folks to provide care in the most meaningful way. And this gives us also a pay structure that allows us to do more contracting, do more work with, with other people who maybe have certain expertise that we don't and rely on them. One of the examples being primary care. If you go to the next slide. Oh, and I skipped over this one. Again, North Dakota, South Dakota, and South Carolina being the only other states that do not have a CCBHC. So we want to be on that list as well. Next slide, please. Okay, so this, this list here are the required services of a CCBHC. I can tell you right now, we are doing most of these. That's what the last two years has been about, is really bolstering certain pieces like psychiatric rehabilitation. But the parts that we're not doing are veteran services, number seven, and then number six, outpatient primary care screening and monitoring. We currently do not have any preferred route of providing treatment and/or referral to somebody with medical issues, which is frankly, most of the people we work with. So we're looking to be able to link with community providers and/or provide it in-house. More likely be doing that community provider partnership to do that primary care piece as well. And then again, as I mentioned, the rest of these we are currently doing, but we're only doing that to that very limited range of people, those folks that are in the severe and extreme designation of our functional assessments. We want to be able to open that up into really everybody. So this, again, the CCBHC designation is a, it's a SAMSA, Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services of America designation that puts us on track or a target to get the ability to do these services and also to get reimbursement that then is mindful of taxpayer dollars that helps us to be sustainable in this model as well. Next slide, please. Some of the early impacts, you can see staffing. We've had a tremendous turnover in the last two years. Really frankly, we've changed the game on how we do services and who we do services to, and a lot of our staff, that's been difficult. A lot of staff have left. We have some very loyal staff who very much want to be a part of what we're doing. But as we go into a CCBHC, or we hope to at least, we would very much like staffing to be more stable, perhaps even attract some of the staff that have left us in the past. If we feel like we can have pieces of the job that they really enjoyed before, I think we'll be there again for them. So early impacts, again, nationwide, staffing has been more stable. Certainly access is decreased, decreased wait times. We currently operate an open assessment or open access assessment system where anybody can walk in and get an assessment the same day. And again, the outcome of that assessment might be that you're then referred into the community to go see somebody else. But this would hopefully, in fact, it would give us the opportunity and even a mandate to say, not only do we have to assess you, but we also have to treat you. So that's a huge thing for us to be able to say that we have resources and the state funding that would give us the resources to be able to provide that treatment to. And then certainly the partnerships with schools, primary care, law enforcement, hospitals, and then reduce hospitalizations, according to SAMSA and the National Council, been significant improvements in that. And then just in the little bubble, you can see that there are some breakdowns of different locations that services are still provided. I think it's important to note that we don't just go back to being clinic-based. We get to still incorporate the community-based services that we've really been working on the last couple of years as well. Next slide. So that's it. All I'm asking for really is just some community feedback and input into our process and maybe some support if you have it.
Thank you. Carrie?
So, John, I work for Youth Works, and I think those of us who do work with vulnerable populations really see on a daily basis the importance, importance of the human service center and this shift, right, particularly going to homes, right? We have youth 18 to 24 who are living in transitional homes and, you know, don't have vehicles. And so it's incumbent upon staff if we have to get them. And now your staff, the staff can come to their homes. You know, youth that we come in through our shelter, we can get into the open access, you know, same day, next day, and get them started with the behavioral health issues. So, I mean, it has been, I think, a game changer for the population we work with, this shift. I know there has been, you know, bumps, but it has been, I think, very well received for the youth that we serve in Minot to have this sort of new model. And particularly, the mobile crisis unit, which you may want to talk more about, has been completely lifesaving sometimes to us when we have youth who are suicidal at the shelter. The first call is to the unit, and it has been just such a godsend to have the resource there. So you want to take a second and maybe share what the mobile crisis unit does and its purpose?
I do, thank you. Mayor Ross, Elder Woman Evans, yeah, our crisis team has really done wonderful things, very proud of the work that they've done. So what we have is anybody in the community can call 988. It used to be 211, but 988 is the current number. And I think that'll be what we stick with for, for quite some time now. But that will link them to First Link. First Link will do a phone assessment, basically of a triage, and figure out, is this a situation that requires some sort of an in-person response? So 24 hours a day, anybody can call that number if you're feeling suicidal, if you're feeling like you are in danger in some way, having any kind of mental health crisis. We will then come to you within a 45-mile range of Minot, and that's any direction outside of Minot. Usually, we try to have a response within 15 minutes, and we can do a lot of different things, one of which is bring you into our crisis residential unit. We can escort you and help pave the way at the hospital for you to get inpatient stays. We've worked very, very well, I think, with the police department. Chief Klug has just been an advocate from the get-go for this team, worked wonderfully with his staff in order for us to have a partnership. We've gone in and done trainings with the police department. They've come and done trainings with us. And I think the team has gone exceptionally well, and we're very proud of the work they do. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk about it.
Any other questions or comments? Scott?
I just want to add, thank you for, John, for coming on, and thank you to the mayor and the president of the council for allowing me to sneak this in at the last minute. I talked to John Friday morning, so that's when I kind of found out that this was needed. What this has the ability to do, when we did our city retreat, we talked about the need for increased mental health services in Minot, the increased addiction services in Minot. This has the opportunity to be a game changer for that without it costing the taxpayers of Minot anything. This is, is bringing in additional federal dollars, additional state dollars in order to do this. And if we can be at the top of this, that we can become a great example for the rest of the state, and I appreciate John for, and his team for stepping up and really pushing Minot as being the solution. Because, you know, Fargo and Bismarck, they get enough crap, so we need to get something good for one. So I appreciate it, so. Thank you.
Any other comments? Thank you, John.
Thank you.
If there's nothing further, please call the roll.
Burlingame?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Roger Gula?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Moving on to item eight on the agenda, that's personal appearances. Now is an opportunity for anyone who wishes to address the council. If there's not, we can, oh, we do have someone.
Hello, Mayor Ross and members of the city council. My name is Wendy Bagley. I'm a member, or a resident of Minot, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. I'm going to speak specifically on the mayor's proclamation on the Disabled Pride Month. And I want to kind of just say at the outset that there's nothing absolutely wrong with recognizing the progress of our society and how we view the challenges and capabilities of those of us who live with disabilities. I do say that I'm going to be sharing some thoughts that maybe people in the disabled community right now will think. It's totally antithetical to them, but I'm going to give you some context to help you see where I'm coming from, and I hope you'll understand. So 20, back in 2002, I was pregnant with my third child, who got diagnosed with Trisomy 13, similar to Down Syndrome. And we were told that he had a 10% chance to live, and that if he did live, that pretty much it would be constant surgeries, constant therapy, constant feeding tubes, and et cetera. And it was a bit of a shock. But with some, you know, discussing with my husband, some thoughts, a lot of prayer that went into it, we felt very strongly. We were given the option to abort that child, and we felt that we needed to give him the best chance possible. And we accepted the fact that our lives could change dramatically. My heart goes out to those parents that live with that constantly, day in and day out, because as I looked into it, honestly, it made me scared. That happened to be a situation I was not called upon to deal with in this life, but I have a lot of empathy in my heart for parents who go through that. However, my children and my family have dealt with very neural atypical situations. My, my oldest child was extremely gifted and talented. We drove an hour and a half every single day for three years to take her to a school that we could afford that would meet her needs. I have another son who is ADHD and struggled with dyslexia and was extremely struggling. I had to take him out of school to try to just focus on him. When we moved up here to Minot, I can honestly say I am so grateful for the, the Air Force JROTC program. With that and welding, he is thriving, and he is happy, and he is going to succeed. I have another son who is struggling with extreme social anxiety, had speech disabilities when he was young, and now is in the process of getting a diagnosis for celiac disease. I also have another son who's an adult. When he moved here with us to Minot, he was a high school dropout. He had been diagnosed on the autism spectrum, extreme social disability and anxiety, was going absolutely nowhere. With the help of, of the Berdick Job Corps, we were able to get him. He got through and he got his GED. With the help of Pathfinders, with the help of Independence, Inc., with the help of vocational rehab, Minot Housing, Social Security Disability, he is now living on his own and happy and trying to just live the best way that he knows how. And he's actually just across the street, wherever, from here. I myself, without glasses, I would be legally blind. I have lived with two decades of severe, at times, depression and have to go through therapy and medication to deal with that. I've also had three decades of disabling chronic migraines. I have friends, a friend that I walk with every single week, or just about every single week, is a disabled veteran and walks with canes. And I do have to put a little plug. I would love to see... And I do have to put a little plug, I would love to see that the library have a bench on the walkway, maybe a covered bench, to help people who are parking in that disabled lawn or side and sometimes have a hard time getting down that long walkway into the front library entrance. Because I know that even that distance is often hard for her. I have really close friends who have dealt with children on the autism spectrum, another one who was on Prairie Grit and did a fabulous job with that team. Disabilities is something that happens to and touches almost all of us. Like I said, we have come great strides in the last few decades in our society in trying to get rid of the stigma, embracing people who are different, and helping us all to reach together and be the best that we can be. I love that. Here's my concern with the Disability Pride proclamation that was passed today. Words have consequences. And the words that are specifically in that proclamation, pride, inclusivity, diversity, welcoming to all, sound great on the surface, but they are part of a social movement that is part of a civil war, a social civil war going on in our country right now. The biggest word that was a flag to me was intersectionality. I will be sending each one of you in your email, I didn't have time today after I saw this on the agenda, but I'm going to share with you a few words, and I will email this to you later, about, and hopefully you can see, I'm trying to make the connection, why this intersectionality, why these words are so, so different, so not different, they're subversive to our American way of freedom. Okay, Judith Butler is best known for gender trouble, feminism, and the subversion of identity. She helped to detach gender from biology by writing that not only can individuals change genders, they can also do this regularly. She writes that gender is in no way a stable identity or locus of agency. Now, she was very, very much a pioneer advancing this concept by aligning queer theory with other radical leftist theories such as critical race theory by saying, quote, "The question of who and what is considered real and true is a question of power," end quote. This is the concept that unites all critical theories, including critical race theory and critical gender studies or gender ideology. When the German academic and Marxist Max Horkheimer and his colleagues at the Frankfurt School expanded Marxism in the 1930s, they applied Marx's view of conflicts between economic classes to society and culture. Critical race theorists would later apply the power struggle to race, saying that America is systemically racist and civil rights are an illusion. That probably sounds familiar to what you might have heard through Critical Race Theory, the 1619 Project pushed by New York Times. And these things have been debated extensively at our state legislature and have been, basically, we've been told by our state legislature, they should not be in the schools. So, critical race theorists, and this is probably, this is where intersectionality comes in. Critical race theorist Kimberlay Crenshaw devised the concept known as intersectionality to describe what she claimed were overlapping examples of victimization between race and gender. In the introduction to Part Six of Critical Race Theory, The Key Writings That Formed the Movement, these editors of this book describe her idea that, quote, "Identity movements based on gender and racial liberation must address the intersectionality of social domination." And then in a chapter she contributed to the book, Crenshaw returns to the topic of social and political power. She writes, quote, "The struggle over which differences matter, race, gender, ethnicity, et cetera, and which do not is neither abstract nor insignificant, they raise critical issues of power." I want to share that these words have power. They are like verbal banners planted in captured ground in our nation's culture war. These ideas of Marxism are completely, 100% diametrically opposed to the idea that every person is endowed by their creator with life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. These ideas seek to segregate and tear apart our society. They use these fine, fluffy, glossy words that many people think, oh, of course, we want to be loving, we want to be inclusive, we want to be accepting. But these words show this deep, subversive agenda. I might not be able to have an influence at the national level.
Respectfully, please start to wrap up your comments. You've gotten well over 10 minutes here.
Have I?
Yes.
I so apologize. Okay. Basically, we went through four city council meetings dealing with these issues of critical race theory and human rights relations, whatever, and you as a city council chose to move this to the Human Relations Committee. But all of a sudden, now you're bringing up this proclamation with these same exact ideas planted in it? This should have much, I would have preferred that you had given that to the Human Relations Committee to deal with those issues or left those words out. They have no place in this city as long as I am here, and I will be watching for the upcoming elections. This is important to me, and I know it's very important to many, many of our city members. We will not let disadvantaged populations, our neighbors, be used as pawns for this social cultural war. Thank you.
I think unfortunately, this is a product of not understanding the source and where it came from and who helped write this proclamation. I think your comments, in my opinion, are off-base and ill-informed. I visited with the author of this proclamation, we worked together on it, and I think you looked way too far into the proclamation to pick out words that best suit your opinion. So thank you for your comments, but they were, in my opinion, ill-informed.
And your opinion is all right, but you know what? Words have consequences.
They do.
They could have been left out. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council? If not, we will move on to item number nine, that's miscellaneous and discussion items, 9.1, the MAC EDC Biannual Presentation. Joining us is Breka Kramer, CEO, President of MAC EDC.
Thank you, Mayor Ross and members of city council. I believe our presentation is being pulled up. As Mayor Ross said, I'm Breka Kramer, the President and CEO of the Minot Area Chamber EDC. I'm also joined by Mark Lyman, who is our Economic Development Specialist. This presentation tonight is going to cover our contractual report for the first half of the year, which covers January through the end of June, and some of the activities specifically tied to the contract with the City of Minot, not everything that we're doing at the Chamber EDC, so we'll kind of keep it brief since we provided a written report. Next slide, please. The mission is something we talk about on a regular basis. I think the biggest part of this is really the advocacy work and investing in the business development and activity of our community is key to what we do in economic development. You guys have seen the mission before, so I'll go ahead and keep moving. Next slide, please. I do want to take a minute on the vision side. You know, as we serve the community and the business community and our area as a whole, we really strive to be the go-to organization to strengthen the business community and drive key initiatives that build and strengthen our economy. And that is a big part of what we do with economic development. And as we, the city is facing, you know, challenging times within the budget, it becomes even more important as President, your city council president, and I know city manager have mentioned, to invest in economic development. Next slide, please. Our Board of Directors is a volunteer board. We do have two representatives on that are appointed positions. One is served by Work County Commission, and also we do have Mayor Ross that sits on our Board of Directors as the City of Minot representative. Next slide, please. Our team is also included in your report. I just call out that we have a tiny team that's kind of tackling these five key strategic initiatives. And as mentioned, Mark is here from the economic development side. And the other part tied to our report would be tied in with workforce development and military liaison position. And I'll go more into that here, a little further into the report. Next slide. So one of the big things that we did adopt is, at the very end of Q4 of 2022, is the Five-Year Strategic Plan. And really, the implementation of this kicked off at the beginning of the year. We've been really working hard to ensure that everything we do for the community fits under community development, economic development, workforce development, all the services we provide through member investor programming and leadership opportunities, also investing in things like supporting entrepreneurs through that pillar. And then obviously, a critical part of what we do is support military, which as we know is over a half a billion-dollar economic impact in our community every year. Next slide, please. So as we look at the Business Retention and Expansion Program, I do want to call out that this is something that we do, not only with those businesses listed as, or have received the North Dakota Primary Sector Certification, but we do this with a number of businesses that we have identified that really impact growth and economic development in our community. Mark Lyman, our Economic Development Specialist, meets with a number of businesses that's not only primary sector, but also that serves primary sector. And part of that is, is what we're trying to do is not only ensure that we understand and work to retain businesses in our community, which is key to the economic base, but also in these discussions, we take a deep dive because we don't attribute, as you guys have seen in those reports we provide, who the business is. What we're also doing is identifying expansion opportunities, and that really allows us to focus in on, are there local programs, whether it be FlexPace, the Service-Based and Planning Council? Are there state programs that we can help them with the expansion or advance that? Or are there connections that we can make? So these relationships and reports that we provide to have a lot of depth to them. And this is something we provide in your packets on a regular basis. Year-to-date, we're sitting at 25 interviews, and we're tracking on track with what we propose in our contract. Next slide. So as we look at attracting new opportunities, I call out in the written report that we provided in Section 1C, there's an extensive list of items here, so I'm not going to cover all of them. You know, one of the biggest things that we've been working on is obviously, last year, we secured operations at the Intermodal Site, and we're also working to develop the Logistics Park in North Dakota, which is a big asset to the community. We've already increased some of the tax base with these efforts and took some properties that were not paying taxes at the time and have those on the tax roll, so a big win for the community. Part of that, too, is the administration of a CIRISY grant, which is something we received a couple of years ago. And with that, that's helping us to develop some of the acreage that we own just to, on the north side of the county road there. And then obviously, there's a lot of partnerships that lead to our success, whether it be through our volunteer committees that serve. We don't get to do what we do without the hundreds of volunteers that support our organization. We try to have a lean staff, but really reach out into the community to build up the work that we do and support the community as a whole. And as mentioned, when I talk about supporting entrepreneurs and those young startup kind of businesses, we have a program called Startup Minot, and we also have a couple of cohorts or training programs tied to that. If you've never been to one of those meetings, I'd love for you to attend. It's a great opportunity to see those that are doing new things in our community and supporting those small businesses that contribute to the community. Next slide. There's a list, a more extensive list in your report, so I'll kind of go through this part quickly. But you know, obviously, as we're doing this, we are tracking some big-scale economic development projects. We have one that is a major primary sector project for not only the Minot area, but also the region, that I would say is one that we're putting a lot of effort into right now. Next slide. With economic development, you know, we are a partner with the City of Minot to help administer the magic fund and applications. This year, year-to-date, we supported the Service-Based and Planning Council, the Business Accelerator Fund, and that was approved, obviously, by city council. And we also are in the process of taking the committee's work that ended at the end of last year, working with city manager, city finance director, and city attorney to vet through the final kind of legal language, and are continuing to move that piece forward to bring the updated guidelines forward to not only the screening committee, but ultimately to city council. We're a strategic partner in developing economic development policies, not only at the city level or the county, but also for the state of North Dakota. We spent a lot of time this past legislative session advocating for and moving forward initiatives that would help advance economic development opportunities for our state. We spent a lot of time in the state legislature, not only working on economic development, but I'll cover a little bit more with workforce. And then we have fielded, year-to-date, there's one RFP that came through the state, and we are the main entity that looks through the state opportunities that they receive, and then how our community could fit into that. And on an ongoing basis, many people may not know, but we end up doing a lot of the community tours, whether it be with leadership from state levels, businesses interesting and growing and developing here, we serve that role for the community. Next slide. Workforce development is one that we, I would say, is a newer effort, and really one that we're focused in on. We know that that's a little barrier to a lot of the growth in our community is workforce issues that we're seeing. And so one of the things we did was really work hard this past legislative session to look at those workforce proposals, how do we tie into those opportunities, and open a pathway for solutions there. January of this year, we added a workforce development specialist to the chamber EDC team. And with that, okay, I thought you guys just cut me off. As far as with that, that position also serves as our military liaison, again, being fiscally responsible to make sure we're serving a couple of those key pillars. We did develop a new talent portal, which ties into the State Department of Commerce's and that Find the Good Life campaign, and that is something we were a pilot program for. It would have cost us right around $50,000, and we were able to work out a partnership where we did not expend those dollars, but did it as their pilot program for this. And that was something that launched this spring. And then one of the latest efforts that we're doing, again, we're trying new things. We don't have a solution for workforce that's just this, like, on a silver platter, here you go, how we're going to do it. But what we are doing is working with all of our partners across the state. We decided to partner, after some outreach with the Petroleum Council on the Back and Grow Effort, which is a humanitarian effort first, but also supports legal immigration. And Minot was actually the first community to bring Ukrainian workforce into the, in through this program. We currently have three individuals here, and we're going to continue to test that out and see what we can do. It's specifically supporting oil and gas, which is huge not only for our area, but also the community. And if there isn't a fit there, we're going to help to feed that workforce into the community. So again, it's kind of a pilot program, but we are trying new things. And that just launched this spring as well, and the first individuals arrived a couple of weeks ago. And then we do serve on, I know Alderman Burlingame chairs the Childcare Committee. Our new workforce development specialist, Kelly Roselli-Sullivan, does sit on that committee on our behalf. Next slide, please. This is something you guys will see at reports, so I'm not going to go over this in further detail, except for, the city manager was instrumental in helping us to really push us to use the LOWE system, or One Location Information System. And to date, we're promoting 47 buildings and 48 sites for development in our community with that system. Next slide. One of the bigger efforts that is tied to our contract is, obviously, we know the impact of Minot Air Force Base. Minot isn't Minot without Minot Air Force Base. And frankly, even if we're the rock stars in economic development, I don't know what you bring in that has a half a billion-dollar economic impact guaranteed every year without something like Minot Air Force Base. So it is an area that we spend a significant amount of time on. Alderman Janser is our chairman for Task Force 21. And with our work there, you know, we're constantly working on strategic leadership positions, making sure that we are tied in with the key areas that we need to be. We also spend a lot of time, the reason why we were able to, even as we're preparing our community for this mega project, with the modernization projects that are ahead of us, and specifically Sentinel. With our work this last legislative session, we were able to secure funding from the state legislature to support our preparation for not only our community, but also our state for Sentinel and for the advocacy work that we do for Task Force, which allowed us to keep our level funding request for military, even though the activity is increasing. That allowed us to keep that level funding request this year to the City of Minot. With that, we're advocating and working on the awareness of the importance of these missions, ensuring that we sustain those moving forward. And you can see, we do this at all levels, North Dakota officials, members of Congress, and really, we're working in the space of working with the public on the national security issues. We'll actually be hosting a nuclear triad symposium in Washington, DC. I know Alderman Padre Gula was at that last year. We will, and so was Mayor Ross and your city manager as well. That is something that we will continue to do and support through these efforts. And then obviously, the big things are the modernization projects, not only for the bomber side, but also the missiles. Next slide. So with that, I try to be brief, but you do have a written report, and if you... And if you, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions, Breka? Carrie?
So, I said it last year, I'm going to say it again. I so much appreciate your reports and how they lay out what, you know, the strategic plan is, what the goals are, where you are in that, where you aren't on in that. It's very clear and precise, and it's very helpful, right? And seeing exactly, you know, the metrics that the chamber is trying to meet. And I love, you know, the addition of the, what is Kelly's position?
Workforce Development Specialist and Military Liaison.
That has been, like, she came out of the, you know, the gate running and has been an amazing asset to the chamber staff. So, I love, you know, everything that you all are doing and your leadership for the organization.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? Harold?
Since you gave me the kudos on LOAS, I feel remiss if I don't ask some questions. And you're probably not prepared to answer these tonight, but I would like to see some data on how successful LOAS has been for Minutet. How many views, what's the reach, what's the most viewed sites and those kinds of things? Because, yes, I brought the idea, but I also want to make sure the idea is working and having an impact. And so, I would like to see, again, not tonight, but in the future, maybe a report on what LOAS is doing for us, what exposure is it giving us that we haven't had previously? And is it working as the way as hoped and intended?
Thank you for that. We can certainly provide that, City Manager, and to all of you as council. One of the things I would say that we feel that there's probably still opportunities, since it is a newer system that we're using. We did actually reach out to some of our strategic economic development partners that utilize the software. How are they doing it? What are the numbers they're seeing and are comparing that to the size of their communities? The other thing is, is that we've found that there is an administrative side to it, because it's only as good as the data that we enter. And so, we're constantly reaching out, not only to the realtors, the developers, but the other part is, is that if we don't know of a private individual listing a property, those are a little bit harder to track. So, we're working administratively to see how do we continue to get the word out that we are a resource and will help, but the capacity of the team, some of those individually listed properties, we may not have a line of sight on. And so, we've been working hard on the education side. We do have those metrics. I don't have them with me tonight.
Any other comments, questions? Steve?
Yeah, I wanted basically to echo what Carrie was saying in terms of being very pleased with the activities of MAC EDC. I'm sorry, it's, these acronyms are difficult.
You nailed it.
I think things have continued to move forward, and I'm pleased with the quality of the reporting you're giving us and, more importantly, the quality of the programming you're engaged in. I think things are continuing to improve and probably improving at a faster pace. The one comment I'd make beside that is to encourage you to focus on the output, not the input. It's very tempting in our organization and bureaucracy to focus on our activities and not really talk too much or look too much at what we've accomplished through those activities. I keep thinking in the mental health field, you know, I read a lot of charts and I see people being in therapy for, you know, 40 sessions or 50 sessions. And I always ask myself, well, what have they accomplished? I mean, yes, the provider has talked with them, whatever, but are they hallucinating less often? Are they being sober for longer? Are they not getting involved with the police, you know, more frequently? You know, I'm looking at those output things. And I think sometimes there's a disconnection between what we put into an activity and what the results are. And I want to encourage you, keep encouraging you to focus on the output. Now, I also know that, and the public, I think, needs to know, that a lot of this stuff really takes a long time to show any dividends. You don't show up in the Pentagon and get a new weapons system just because you show up. You have to lay the groundwork, you have to lay the foundation for months and years and decades sometimes. But I think there is always that risk in any organization that you focus too much on the inputs and not enough on the outputs, on the results of what you've done. So, I think if you can give us that information, like Harold is talking about asking for, you know, how many people looked at the website? How many people actually have come to Minutet and started new jobs? Those are the kinds of things I think that are really persuasive in the long run. But what I'm seeing, what I'm hearing, I'm very pleased with. Again, I think it's moving in a even more positive direction than before. And I really appreciate your thorough and candid assessment of what's happening and wish you, you know, the greatest continuing success. Things are moving, moving where they should be, I think.
Thank you very much for that, Alderman Padregula. Maybe one comment in the strategic plan. You will find that at year-end, we have measurements, not only that are, we hold our own organization up against in each of those five key pillars, but there are community measurements that we're tracking, too. We know it's not the work that we're doing, so you'll see the breakdown in the strategic plan. So, we have the Chamber EDC metrics, but we also have the community metrics that we're tracking. We may not have a direct influence on those, but all of those matter in the bigger scheme of things when it looks, what we're doing holistically. So, all of that is outlined in the strategic plan, which should be in your packet, too.
Any other comments? I can tell you, serving on this board has been an absolute treat. It's, we've all served on boards that have been, for the most part, for the lack of a better term, has just been a morning coffee club or something like that. From start to finish, every single member of that board is active and working hard. And I see, I see one or two of those board members out here, out in the audience. And it's, the culture that has changed in that organization is making it much more attractive for business. And businesses see that, and they want to be involved in that because of the excitement. You want to be involved in something that's exciting. And whether we're down at the legislature, as we were, fighting for flood control or whatever, we would have people coming up to us and talking about what's going on in Minutet. What are you guys doing in Minutet? Because everybody's talking about it. And I think the Chamber EDC has a big role to play in that, along with everybody who's sitting up here at the dais. So, I just, it's one of those board meetings I don't want to miss. I think the only one that I did miss was, I was out of town or something like that. But, yeah, I really look forward to it, and I know you're creating a culture there of success. And we're going to see some big things in the future.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ross.
Anything else? Thank you, Breka.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, liaison reports. Let's start with Lisa.
I have a discussion item.
Oh, you do? Okay. I didn't see it on the agenda.
Well, it's sort of not liaison. So, I just, on, twice a year, the North Dakota Continuum of Care does a point-in-time survey of homeless individuals in Minutet. So, this Wednesday will be the summer one. So, we, it's done at nighttime, and it helps identify what homelessness looks like across the city and the state and within our local communities and provides data to the state and the feds so we can get funding. So, the Continuum of Care is, I was looking for volunteers to come help because, you know, sort of spread out across the city, hit the shelters and things like that. If anyone is interested, Tessa Curtis at Youth Works is coordinating this Wednesday night's point-in-time survey.
Okay. Thank you. Liaison reports, let's start with Lisa.
Thank you. I've got kind of a long report, so I'll go through it as quickly as I can. June 20th, I attended the Service-Based Planning Council Executive Board meeting. On June 28th, I attended the MPO Steering Committee meeting. Representatives from the City of Minutet, Ward County, City of Surrey, and City of Burlington, along with North Dakota DOT staff, developed the first of many guidelines for the MPO. An important decision made at that time was to create a MPO Policy Board with seven members. Three are from the City of Minutet, two from Ward County, one from the City of Burlington, and one from the City of Surrey. The request from the Steering Committee was to officially appoint members to the MPO Policy Board. And that first policy board meeting was July 14th. The City Council appointed Mark Janser, Harold Stewart, and myself. On July 13th, I attended the Committee on Childcare, where we discussed a variety of funding sources for new businesses. Then, on the 14th, I did attend the MPO Policy Board meeting. This committee will develop the bylaws, which must be completed and submitted to the Governor's Office by the end of the year. The committee approved the MPO's name, which is Central Dakota MPO. City of Minutet offered to house staff at the Public Works Building. That's when we hire staff, which will be at a later date. Boundary lines of the MPO were approved by the Policy Board. And since the committee has a lot of decisions to make in a very short amount of time, it was determined that committee members could have alternates named so that there is not ever a vacancy during the upcoming meetings. And I think that that will be on an upcoming agenda for us as well. The next MPO Policy Board meeting is August 24th. And other dates of interest that I think the community would be watching would be, August 15th will be the first Human Relations Committee. And August 24th is the City-City Park and School Board Liaison Committee meeting.
Okay. Carrie?
The library moved its board meeting, so it will be this Wednesday at 4:30 in the library. We always invite people to come. I mean, we have been, the board has been asked to actually try and cut the library budget, proposed budget by over $600,000, so we're going to have some, it's going to be a long meeting. We also, as has been every meeting in the past, you know, few months, have a challenge to a book that is on the shelves, so that will be heard. That's about it.
Steve?
Thanks. I missed the Emergency Resource Council meeting because of medical appointment in Bismarck the first part of the month. I did attend the Commission on Aging meeting this past Friday. They continue to try to tighten their belt, as we've asked. They provide a lot of services. In a typical month, for example, they serve 15,000 meals to senior citizens in Minutet and the surrounding area, and the demand keeps increasing. They're starting to have a waitlist for some of the services, particularly some of the nursing services. So, we are seeing an impact because of limited funding. And it does affect the most needy and least fortunate people in our community. One of the things, on the positive side, that's happening with Commission on Aging is that the state has provided more funding for those services. I think most of that is federally based, but they're still, after a substantial increase in funding per meal, they're still running about $4 short per meal. So, $4 times 15,000 is a lot of deficit that they're building by providing nutritious services to people in Minutet and in our region. So, again, costs do have an impact on people. And it's good that the legislature did provide increased funding, but it still doesn't come close to meeting the costs of those services. In terms of the Ward County Planning Commission, Carrie and I represent the city on that. We had some routine approvals of various replats and things like that. And we still have not finalized, or we've come close, but still have not finalized the new proposed zoning plan. And one of the things we've been talking about and stuck on and making some progress finally on is what kinds of usages can go and what kinds of zones, which is kind of what we're talking about here today with that residential facility downtown. So, it is an important one, and I think it needs those kinds of classifications. And definitions need to be periodically revised because things do change and things we didn't anticipate. You know, five years ago, when you wrote up a plan or a zoning code, are happening now. And we also, as best as we can, need to try to look toward the future in terms of where this community may be in, you know, 15 or 20 years. That's the kind of timeframe we're looking at with those kinds of decisions. So, we're making some progress there, and that's basically it.
Thank you. Scott?
So, Alderman Olson talked a little bit about the Childcare Committee, which is the only one I've met with recently. As she said, on the 13th, we had discussed local, oh my gosh, leveraging economic development funds for childcare in Minutet. Had some outside speakers come in. Mark from MA EDC spoke about some projects, just really looking at all that. I do want to make sure the public knows that the Chamber EDC has sent out a survey for employers around the issues of childcare. So, if you haven't had a chance to fill that out yet, check your inbox, get that filled out, provide that input. It would be very helpful to us as we continue to gather information. In addition, this Thursday at 4:30 in this room, we'll be having our providers' perspective meetings. So, we're inviting providers of childcare services to come in and let us know their input. Also, on the 10th, we will be having the employer's perspective, the 10th at 1:30. And then, the 15th, at 5 o'clock, we will be having our parents' perspective. So, if you are a person that's concerned about childcare in the Magic City, we'd love to hear your input at any of those three meetings and come to the most appropriate one. If not, you're always welcome to send me an email, and I will gladly share that with the group as well. So, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Paul?
Don't forget about Mark. But my Renaissance, the Renaissance Board meeting for June was canceled. Again, I stated earlier, was able to attend a couple of department head meetings, budget meetings, where, again, a lot of tough decisions are being made. But, again, I think overarching all of it, I think it was a great team-building exercise for everyone to understand, we're all in the same boat, we're all working with the same wallet as Alderman Padregula is flexing on everybody earlier with his money there. And then, Visit Minutet Board last week, again, a lot of good things happening there. One of the highlights, middle of July, we had a softball tournament, a girls' fast pitch, Storm Tournament. Over 86 teams for that softball tournament in Minutet, and there was 15 baseball teams. So, over 100 teams in Minutet from all over the Midwest. And the resounding feedback from the people who participated in that tournament from out of town was world-class facilities, world-class hospitality, again, a lot of good things. And the individuals who put on that tournament with Storm Fast Pitch were very clear that those tournaments don't happen without the support of Visit Minutet and all the good work that they're doing over there. And just an update on the TRRF, the Tourism Recovery and Resiliency Fund, the enterprise agreement we entered in with Visit Minutet a few years back, it was required that we hit a $10 million economic development impact or economic impact into the community, and we will far exceed that. Right now, we're projected to be right around $10 million bucks. So, again, a lot of good work going on over there, and that's what I've got.
Good. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lisa covered the MPO Committee, which I am part of. I have nothing further.
Thank you, Mark. Most of my report was covered in my liaison report. So, before adjourning, I see he stepped out, but maybe he's out in the lobby. I'd like to wish Finance, Director of Finance, Dave Lakefield, a happy birthday today, making him stay late on his birthday. So, Dave, if you can hear us, you can come in and sing "Happy Birthday" maybe. Okay, he waved. We got to wave. We got to wave. If there is nothing else to come before the council, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
He can hear us out there, right? Happy birth-